Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I will call this Bloomington City Council meeting to order. Our first meeting of 2025. Tonight is Monday, January 6, 2025. Welcome to everybody who has joined us here in the council chambers and everyone watching at home. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, please stand, remove any coverings, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, welcome to everybody. I hope everybody had a good holiday season, and 2025 has started off well for you. Council, our first agenda item of the evening is to adopt the agenda. And on our agenda this evening, I think one of the early agendas that went out included item 2.1, which is the introduction of new employees. We're taking that off. We had the employee that we were going to introduce is not available tonight, so we're taking that off, which would make item 2.1 being the 2024 Omar Bondurud Award, and the 2.2 item would be then the proclamation for Martin Luther King Day. Our consent business is 18 items long, and Councilmember Carter has our consent agenda this evening. Under item 4, hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we don't have a public hearing scheduled for tonight, but leads us to number 5, our organizational business, and we've got 13 items under organizational business. The first item, 5.1, is a study item for our small business codes and processes. Item 5.2 is a look at the Planning Commission work plan for 2025. And then we go into a series of appointments that we do on our first meeting of every year, as we typically do. 5.3 will be appointment to the Bloomington Fire Relief Association. 5.4 is an appointment to the 494 Corridor Commission. 5.5 to the Sustainability Commission appointment. 5.6, the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee appointment. 5.7, the 35W Solutions Alliance. 5.8, the 169 Corridor Coalition. 5.9, Bloomington, Minnesota travel and tourism appointments. 510, our council secretary appointment. 511 would be the Metro Cities Board of Directors appointment, and 512 would be the Greater Metropolitan Area Foreign Trade Zone appointment. We'll wrap up with item 5.13, our city council policy and issue update. Council, any additions, corrections, or edits to the agenda as stated tonight? If not, I would move approval of the agenda as stated.
Second.
Motion and a second by Councilmember Womack to accept tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries 6-0, noting the absence of Councilmember Rebus not with us this evening. So we will move on to item 2.2 and 2.3, our Omar Bondurud Award. Let me get down to the podium. Item 2.1 this evening is our annual Omar Bondurud Award. And this is a special award. This is something that Bloomington has done every year for a number of years, and every year it brings out what I think is the best in the city of Bloomington. People doing what's right for their community in a variety of different ways and receiving an award named for Omar Bondurud. And the Omar Bondurud Human Rights Award is presented annually, as I said, by our Human Rights Commission to an individual or an organization that has made significant contributions to ensuring the human rights of the people of Bloomington. And Omar Bondurud was the first chairperson of the Human Rights Commission, which was founded way back in 1968, shortly after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. This year's honoree is Bloomington Freedom to Read Club. Founding members include Kate Bolden, Shay Ross, Nora, I knew I was going to blow this one, Nora Rinkensrud, did I get that right? Very good, thank you, Nora. Johnny Kerwin, Ayla Rash, Lily Mortensen, Abigail Clavens-Schmitz, and Amber Colvin. We're going to hear a lot more about what they've done, an impressive group of young people, and we're going to hear a lot more about what they've done in just a moment here. Bloomington Freedom to Read was created by this impressive group of Jefferson and Kennedy High School students to advocate for the right to access inclusive literature. They organized listening sessions, spoke at school board meetings, and shared personal stories to draw attention to the importance of inclusive representation in school libraries. The group achieved what we like to call a very significant victory when the school board adopted a new gender equity policy for staff and students, and a state law was passed making it harder to ban books from Minnesota libraries. Congratulations to Bloomington Freedom to Read. We're going to hear from them in just a moment, but first, I would like to turn the podium over to the Chair of our Human Rights Commission, Anita Smithson. Good evening and welcome, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, City Manager, Assistant City Managers. And I wanted to recognize that we have a few members of the Bloomington School Board that are here today, as well as the Hennepin County Library Board and community advocates and parents. So thank you all so much for being here this Monday night. So what stood out to the Human Rights Commission was that this amazing group of young people was nominated twice for this award this year by two different members of our community for the work that they did to protect and expand the First Amendment right of all students, really. One of the nominations focused on the impact their work had on local policy through establishing two school board policies. First, a media policy that provides a process for the selection and the challenge to reading materials. And second, a gender equity policy for staff and students of our Bloomington public schools. Protecting the rights of young people to read is momentous on its own, but the added benefit of cultivating an environment where young people are free to express the truest version of themselves is a priceless anti-bullying and harm reduction practice. The second nomination focused on the impact that their work has had on students, educators, and schools across Minnesota. Throughout history, rights have often been won through hard work and advocacy of those who are most impacted by the decisions being made by standing up, speaking out, and taking action. This group of young people garnered attention in both our city and across the state, and their contributions helped not only ensure that lawmakers understood their story, but understood the impacts to them if their rights weren't explicitly protected. Through their advocacy, they helped ensure passage of a state law that makes it more difficult for students across Minnesota to have their First Amendment rights restricted through punitive media policies. We are so proud of the work that you've done to further enshrines this right for years to come and are grateful for the opportunity to have you with us today and for you to receive this recognition and to be able to tell the community about all of your efforts. So I'm going to ask Grant to play a video that we have, the city has wonderfully prepared, and then we will introduce them.
Books are often a place where you can find yourself represented, and you don't feel like you are alone, or you're an outcast, or there's something wrong with you. Bloomington Freedom to Read was a group that we started because we were experiencing adults in the community wanting to ban books from our high school, middle school, and elementary school libraries. And as students, we wanted to share our voices, because these were our schools, and let the school board know that we wanted to keep these books around.
We were a group of like six or seven core members and 25 or so other students from both Kennedy and Jefferson High Schools who came together to challenge this petition by the Bloomington Parents Alliance, also associated with Moms for Liberty, to remove books from our school libraries. And so we came together and we wrote speeches to present to the school board during their monthly listening sessions to speak towards our opposition to this petition.
As soon as you have someone whose identity is stripped from the media, then they're stripped from the community as a whole as well. So we felt like the efforts targeted queer people, trans people, all these different groups of students who at our school are represented by this media, and by taking that away, they would be not represented and then not feel like a part of the community, which is unacceptable. The school board decided to make it more difficult for books to be removed from our libraries, so I think that's a huge win for us. They definitely listened, we felt represented. I think it was a great effort all around, and I'm really happy with how it went.
Not only did we speak to the school board, but we spoke to the governor as well and people who deal with education statewide. We saw Tim Walz pass a policy that would make it harder to ban books in Minnesota. So that was really nice to see that he was willing to meet with us and hear out our voices and hear what the students want, and then put that into action. It felt really nice when we were getting this award from the city. I felt like, I felt very appreciated. It felt nice to have our efforts affirmed.
It was an acknowledgement that the city and the schools are listening to the students.
It's a great thing to have, but it's also, it wasn't what we were going for the whole time. It's deeper than just getting recognition. So I'm excited, and I'm honored, and I appreciate it, but also this is something that has to continue to be fought.
Thank you to the school board, and thank you to all the adults that guided us through the context of Bloomington Parents Alliance and Moms for Liberty and sort of started the work that we ended up doing. And thank you to Johnny Kerwin's moms, who hosted all of our meetings outside of school, and thank you to the city at large.
It is my honor to congratulate the members of the Bloomington Freedom to Read Club for being named the 2024 Omar Bondurud Human Rights Award winners. Kate, Shay, Nora, Johnny, Ayla, Lily, Abigail, and Amber, as a mom of young people, thank you for setting a shining example for our community and our state. And you may come up.
Okay. On behalf of all of our founding members, thank you. We started Freedom to Read in response to book challenges in Bloomington. Together, we raised awareness and spoke at school board listening sessions, emphasizing the importance of keeping these books in our libraries. We are so grateful that we had the opportunity to speak up for what we believe in and are having that recognized here tonight. We would like to thank our parents for their support, especially the Kerwins, who hosted our writing sessions and fed us really good food. Thank you to the Bloomington moms who made their support for us known and sent RGSA's care packages. Thank you to our teachers for their support and belief in us. To other Bloomington residents and students who made their voices heard individually at listening sessions, thank you to the school board for listening to us and taking our ideas and beliefs into consideration when revising the library materials policy. Thank you to the authors, who write books worth fighting for. Thank you to everyone here tonight who showed up to show your support. And lastly, thank you to the Human Rights Commission and the city for what they do to keep Bloomington an inclusive place. We are honored and grateful to receive this award. However, the fight is not over.
Thank you, Abby, and hello, everyone. Thank you so much for being here. Your presence is much appreciated. Thank you. Thanks to all of your support, Freedom to Read was able to accomplish much as a group, from speaking at school board listening sessions to campaigning for school board members to even being recognized by the governor of Minnesota. However, as Abby said, this fight doesn't end with us. Freedom to Read at its core was created in defense of diversity, representation, and truth. In the coming years, we anticipate many challenges to these tenants, as our new administration has made it clear that defending education is not our priority. Books have already been under siege across the nation with over 10,000 book bans in public schools last year alone, and this campaign against literature has ushered in increased censorship, not only in libraries, but in schools' curriculums as well, evidenced by the waves of opposition to academic concepts such as critical race theory and even social and emotional learning. However, we as students, as educators, and as readers cannot underestimate our capacity to enact meaningful change when we are educated, organized, and engaged. This means having difficult conversations with family members and those whose views differ from your own. This means interrogating your own internal prejudices and biases, and this means reading banned books. We believe wholeheartedly that literature is what empowers youth to engage with their communities, to build political movements and to find their voices. It's what enables students to come to terms with their identities, to understand where they fit into society, and to forge their own path forward. We believe that books are the foundation of progress, and it is our duty to protect
We still have a meeting. There's some good stuff coming up.
Sorry.
them.
Sandwiches. Yeah, there's sandwiches out there. I mentioned earlier that our Human Rights Commission was formed back in 1968 and mentioned Thank you both so very much and for being such outstanding representatives of the the connection to Dr. Martin Luther King. And so it seems appropriate that this next proclamation for Martin Luther King Junior city of Bloomington, and thanks to all of you for the work that you've done. Anita, could you help me pass the plaques out? Day comes on the same night that we talked about the Omar Bondurud Award, and it does Because we have to get a picture, of course. Congratulations to all of you. every year, which works out very nicely, I think. Congratulations for the great work that you've done, for your commitment to your city, and It's just a nice symmetry within the work that we do here in the city. for your commitment to a cause bigger than yourselves and just being outstanding representatives. And so this proclamation for Martin Luther King Junior Day, January 20, 2025. So thank you so very much. Let's get a picture, should we? Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., the leader of the modern civil rights movement in the United States, was born on January 15, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia. And whereas Dr. King devoted his life to advancing civil rights and public services. And whereas Dr. King's message evolved over time from one of basic civic rights of voting and desegregation to advancing labor rights, economic and social justice, and peace and dignity for all. And whereas Dr. King looked forward to the day when everyone would be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And whereas Dr. King challenged a moderate stance against racial inequality, questioning those who would tell black Americans to wait for a more convenient time for action, or those who would understand the need for justice but not agree with the methods of direct action. And whereas Dr. King's pursuit of justice and coalition building grew to unite those suffering from racism and also those suffering in poverty, recognizing that there can and should be an uplift for all who are unjustly and unnecessarily encumbered by an economic system that amplifies disparity and concentrates wealth into fewer hands. And whereas Dr. King's dream continues to inspire our nation and is just as important today as it was in the 1960s. And whereas there are many goals that the city of Bloomington must realize in order to achieve the city's strategic priority of inclusion and equity for all residents. And whereas Dr. King was assassinated on April 4, 1968, and after 15 years of advocacy, Martin Luther King Junior Day was signed into law in 1983 and first celebrated as a federal holiday in 1986, but was not officially observed in all 50 states until the year 2000. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim January 20, 2025, as Martin Luther King Junior Day, and ask all community members in Bloomington to remember and reflect on the principles of racial equality and nonviolent social change espoused by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and to rededicate themselves to the philosophy that we can all share the dream for a better life, not only in Bloomington, but also in the world, dated the 6th day of January 2025. As I said, I think it's so fitting that our Omar Bondurud Award and the Martin Luther King proclamation happened on the same evening, and they have been for a number of years with the timing of what we do. And I think it's fitting, and it reflects not only what we look for and what we envision for our city, but what we look for and what we envision in our country as well. So I don't think we have anyone to accept the proclamation tonight, but we have the proclamation, and I'm proud to have read it. And Council, if you will beg me a bit of a mayor's privilege here, I'm going to do a quick walk on here, if that's okay. Another proclamation that we have. Bloomington is unique in a lot of different ways. Unique in a lot of different ways. And one way that is it especially unique is over the past 60 years, 50 years, the city of Bloomington has had three city managers. John Pidgen, Mark Bernadette, and Jamie Verbrugge. That just does not happen in cities anywhere. And it's a testament to the incredible quality of those leaders, but it's also a testament to what this community expects out of its leaders and what it expects out of management in government and in our community just in general. And we say goodnight, we say, tonight, we say goodbye to our city manager, Jamie Verbrugge. This is his last meeting as Bloomington city manager. I like to point out to Jamie that I knew his dad before I knew him, because I worked with his dad at the University of Minnesota. Sarge was on the police department, and I worked at the University of Minnesota. But had the opportunity and the pleasure of knowing Jamie because of our paths crossing through city interactions at the city of Rosemont, the city of Eagan, in different city groups in a lot of different ways. And I can't tell you how fortunate we were back 10 years ago when Mark Bernadette had retired and Jamie applied and was one of the finalists for this position. The fact that he was chosen here, as I said, reflects this community's insistence on excellence in leadership and its insistence on not only having a strong public leader, but a good man in that seat as city manager. And I'm going to miss him. Good for Jamie, good for Catholic Charities, which is where Jamie's going, bad for us. We're certainly going to miss him because of all that he has brought to this community over the years, the past decade. And I'm going to miss him personally, because after knowing him for 25 or 30 years, having the opportunity to work with him for 10, it's just not going to be the same to come into the office and not be able to sit and talk, go for football, what's going on in the city of Bloomington, what's going on at the state and national level, traveling with him to conferences in Washington, DC, and having that perspective is going to be different. And with that, I'm going to read a proclamation for Jamie Verbrugge Day, January 6, 2025. Whereas Jamie Verbrugge, do you want to come down here? Why don't you come on down here? Yeah, come on down here. Let's get the photo op, should we? You can stand right there. Okay, that's good. Jamie Verbrugge Day, January 6, 2025. Do you want to do this in your big stadium voice?
No.
I'll do it. I'll do it. Whereas Jamie Verbrugge served in the top leadership role of city manager for Bloomington since 2015, overseeing key initiatives, award-winning services, and many accomplishments that included creating Bloomington Tomorrow Together, the city's first community-based strategic plan, with a mission to create an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And whereas, always a forward-thinking leader, Jamie spearheaded Bloomington's bid to become a finalist to a U.S. host for the 2027 World Expo. He led educational efforts that resulted in voters passing a sales tax to fund $155 million in community investments, and he oversaw efforts to reimagine Bloomington's South Loop District through significant development and creative placemaking. And whereas, under his leadership, the city made critical investments in affordable housing and sustainability to support long-term infrastructure, equitable growth, and climate resilience. And whereas during Jamie's tenure, the city's leadership and workforce became more diverse, and the city advanced strategic planning and racial equity, inclusivity, community engagement, and innovation. And whereas, with Jamie at the helm, resident satisfaction with services and quality of life remained high, as reflected in annual surveys, and Bloomington maintained its top AAA bond rating. And whereas, Jamie dedicated much of his time outside of his city manager role by serving on the Board of Directors for Artistry, the American Red Cross, and North Hennepin Community College, and is a member and president of the Bloomington Noon Rotary Club. And whereas, Bloomington received multiple awards and recognitions under Jamie's leadership, including Best Drinking Water. I bet. I'll try that again. Whereas Bloomington received multiple awards and recognitions under Jamie's leadership, including Best Drinking Water. I bet. I'll try that again. Whereas Bloomington received multiple awards and recognitions under Jamie's leadership, including Best Drinking Water in the state and country, Increased Transparency, and Enhanced Communications Health and Wellness Initiatives, and Excellence in Sustainability and Public Safety Services. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim January 6, 2025, as Jamie Verbrugge Day in the city of Bloomington, dated the 6th day of January 2025. Thank you. Congratulations, my friend.
I don't know who to blame for this. Other than myself, right? I mean, I only have myself to blame for this. Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. I usually show up for dignified proceedings, like council meeting, looking not like a schlub, but I feel like cleaning out the shed today. Circumstances, right? And I actually use that phrase that these are dignified proceedings, because I honestly believe that. I mean, the work that gets done here is really important work, and the folks that are sitting behind me and the guy standing next to me deserve a lot of credit for their willingness to step forward in the community. Local government is where it happens in this country, right? The thing that affects people's lives most directly is where they live, and the fact that you're willing to do that work is really important. And the fact that you entrusted me to do this work is something that I will be grateful for the rest of my life. And as I look at some of the folks that are here, this row, a couple rows right here, you don't get to this place without having some really fantastic mentors and professional friends who guide you along the way. Tom Hedges is sitting here, who was the city administrator in Eagan for 36 years, 37 years, Tom. I learned a ton from him. Craig Rap, who was one of my predecessors in Brooklyn Park, survived to tell the story and then actually use that experience to make a whole lot of us better city managers as a result. And Craig has also worked with our city and done some strategic planning here with us. Dave Osberg is one of my best friends in the business, was a good mentor for me. Richard Fersman, sitting there, another one of my best friends in the business and has been a tremendous partner as we've done work here, has also worked with the city council with his wife, Arena Fersman, who is one of the most amazing facilitators and shepherds of process of anybody that I've ever met. Matt Fulton's another great leader. Matt, now working for ICMA, didn't hire me to be his assistant, and not only that, didn't remember that he even interviewed me ever, and has become one of my best friends. So Diane Miller, who actually started working as an intern in Eagan, took my job there and is now the city administrator there and doing a fantastic job. You know, being able to do this work and have such really, really good friends who understand what this job is about and provide support has been very meaningful to me, and that you're sitting here is very meaningful to me. The staff at the city of Bloomington is second to none, period. I don't say that because I hired them. I don't say that because I get to direct them every day. I say it because I get to see it every day in the work that they do. And it is an absolute pleasure to get to work with people who are such amazing and committed public servants. This community is special, and the work that has happened here happens because...
And Craig has also worked with our city and done some strategic planning here with us. Dave Osberg is one of my best friends in the business, was a good mentor for me. Richard Fersman sitting there, another one of my best friends in the business and has been a tremendous partner as we've done work here, has also worked with the city council with his wife, Arina Fersman, who is one of the most amazing facilitators and shepherds of process of anybody that I've ever met. Matt Fulton's another great leader. Matt, now working for ICMA, didn't hire me to be his assistant, and not only that, didn't remember that even interviewed me. And has become one of my best friends. So Diane Miller, who actually started working as an intern in Eagan, took my job there and is now the city administrator there and doing a fantastic job. You know, being able to do this work and have such really, really good friends who understand what this job is about and provide support has been very meaningful to me, and that you're sitting here is very meaningful to me. The staff at the city of Bloomington is second to none, period. I don't say that because I hired them. I don't say that because I get to direct them every day. I say it because I get to see it every day in the work that they do. And it is an absolute pleasure to get to work with people who are such amazing and committed public servants. This community is special, and the work that has happened here, it happens because they are exceptional at the work that they do. I do think that I hire well. I think that's one of my strengths as a leader is I can identify really good leaders. And then being able to trust them to do the work is part of good leadership. And this group does great work. And it's not just the folks who are sitting in the room today, it's the other 700 or so folks who work for the city of Bloomington as well. This community is incredibly well-served because of them. And then there's a whole bunch of rabble-rousers sitting here. These are all my best friends in the world that I grew up with. I mean, I've known these guys for, some of these guys for almost 45 years, maybe even more than that. And then my family's sitting here as well. And I don't know why she's sitting over there like videoing this whole thing instead of actually sitting with the rest of the family. But you know, this, this is a, this is a full family commitment when you take a job like this. Family makes sacrifices. The family has to provide a lot of support and can't do a job like this without having them as part of it. It's nice that my life partner is also a local government person. We met working at the city of Richfield 30, 30 years ago, 28 years ago, 29 years ago? Whatever. She kept stopping by my cube and I'm really glad that she did because I never would have picked up on the cubes otherwise. Look, I pay attention to a lot of things, but sometimes I'm a little bit oblivious too. But anyway. You all honor me tonight, thank you. I really appreciate the fact that you made time from your schedule to come join me. I told the mayor this evening, it's been a couple weeks in the family. I won't bore you with all the details, but I haven't had a lot of time to prepare for this. Because I anticipated at the end of the meeting that I'd make some remarks and I want to make sure that I give credit where credit is due to the folks that are sitting behind me and to everybody who helps make this enterprise happen on a daily basis. But I wasn't quite sure what I was going to say. And thanks to Melissa, our city attorney, who made sure I had one of these. I'm not going to need it, I don't think. You know, I tell people all the time that I don't do feelings, so. I'm just going to leave this right here. I would say, you know, these last 10 years have been, have been amazing. Bloomington is a, an economic engine for the state, and I knew a lot of those things when I came here. But what I didn't really appreciate was the potential that existed in this community to actually be a great community. And the fact that the council was able to articulate a mission, a vision, a future where they wanted to go, and then actually gave us the support and the resources necessary to go make that happen. Because a lot of, a lot of elected officials pay lip service to things like mission and vision, and this one doesn't. This one, this, this group right here, they, they want to see good things happen in the community, and you're willing to do the things which sometimes are politically risky, you're willing to do the things that are necessary to get there. And I have every day appreciated the support, and every day that I've walked through the doors of this building, I have been grateful for the opportunity to be here. So I'm going to stop now. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Because we're Bloomington, we've got a video. There's more. Oh, wait, there's more.
There's more. Okay. I'm going to.
Hello, everybody. Welcome back to another issue of the Verbrugge Vlog. We are doing it live from River Rendezvous. I'm showing off my grilling abilities, so I got to make sure that I don't burn Lori with some of the fire that's coming up into the camera just like that. I'm going to hop up into one of our plow trucks, and I'm going to take us for a spin around the Western Maintenance Facility. The only way I can get this wrong is if I go for a swim.
Correct.
We're standing in the middle of the pool right now in the vessel. Here comes a call. The most visible service that the city of Bloomington provides is public safety. I'm really starting to have second thoughts about this.
I'm ready to do this. Here we go. Oh, why did I do this? Why did I do this? Why did I do this? Hang on, hang on. No fungus! No! They're still alive.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome back to another Friday Live.
I want to talk about the continuation of remote working. In 2015, when I started, fewer than 5% of our staff identified as black, Latino, Asian, indigenous, or other. And today, that number is close to 18%, which represents a significant stride forward in one of my goals, which is to make sure our organization reflects the community that we serve.
We bet on Bloomington with the Expo bid, and though we didn't win it, we've been successful.
This is the 10th state of the city that we've done since I started in Bloomington. And never have we had so much to report on about what we're doing to partner with and to promote and to support our business community.
Our residents have time and again demonstrated how much they care about Bloomington, how remarkable they think it is as a community, and how firmly committed they are to a future where people can have that same experience in Bloomington.
And I think I can speak for, you know, a good chunk of all of us that work here.
Called me up this morning, told me about the new job you found. Said, I'm happy for you. Look, I'm really happy for you.
And that is a wrap on Friday Live. There was a lot to get to. I really appreciate everybody's patience, a lot to celebrate here, so many good things going on right now. I know that everybody is just busier than heck, and we never seem to slow down. I just, again, want to say thank you for everything that you are doing to make sure that we are successful and that this community continues to be an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be.
Up, up, and away.
Now, we do have to take pictures, so. If anybody wants to be in the picture, come on up here, please. Please come up here. I almost forgot about the video. I just want to make one note, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, is that I'm still working tomorrow, so discipline can be meted out as appropriate, so. You know, first rule is you don't want to surprise the city manager, so, you know, I'm glad for the conversation. Thank you. We will move on to item three, our consent business this evening. Our consent business, Councilmember Carter has the consent agenda. We have 18 items, Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think we have 19 items, correct? 19, yes.
19, my apologies.
So I want to make sure I got the number right. Do you, I have any holds?
3.1 and 3.2. I just want to jump out of those.
Okay. Okay, hearing no others, I would move to approve items 3.3 to 3.19.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Muah to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Item 3.1, Councilmember Loman.
Oh, Mayor, doing my job at the Treasury, I want to avoid voting for these, I want to abstain from these.
Very good. Councilmember Carter, if you could move item 3.1 and 3.2 perhaps, and why don't we, we can do them.
Is it 3.2?
And 3.2. We can do them together, correct? Let's do those together.
All right, I would move to approve items 3.1 and 3.2.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Muah, to accept items 3.1 and 3.2 on tonight's consent business. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? And?
Me, so abstain.
An abstention from Councilmember Loman. So council, it passes 5-0 with one abstention. Thank you, Councilmember Carter. We will move on. In our agenda, as I mentioned when we went through it, no hearings and resolutions and ordinances this evening, so we will move on to our organizational business. Item 5.1 is a study item. This regarding our small business codes and processes. And Nick Johnson from our planning department is here to lead us through this. Good evening, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor members. That's a hard act to follow up all those introductory items, I must say. That was fun to watch, and thanks to the city manager for his service to the city. Yeah, let's get going. So the study item before you is a variety of different city code requirements that often intersect or interact with small businesses either when they are being formed, or get, getting occupancy, or continue effect operations as they operate in Bloomington. So I should note that I do have with me Barb Wolf from the city's Port Authority. She has become, or continues to be, one of the main conduits from the small business community into community development in the city. So if called upon, she can probably provide some feedback from, from the business community. In addition, Planner Dakota Castaneda is also with me to present the exterior materials and coatings portion of the presentation. So thanks to them. Just a little bit of background around this project, so if you recall, I was standing here a year ago, and the city council added this project to our work plan, and appreciative of you doing so. In terms of the policy support for this project, so there's multiple important policy documents at the city of Bloomington that support this work in terms of just refining our city codes and regulations around improving the local economic conditions of the city. But most notably, maybe, perhaps, is the five-year strategic plan around priority number three, the equitable economic growth. So some of these changes have a lot of potential to support priority three of the strategic plan. But overall, and this is, kind of runs on the heels of the Streamlining Development Project, which we presented to you before, and the Planning Commission moved through their process and you adopted. But overall, we just want to try and lower barriers for business formation and operations. There's a lot of reasons to do that, but basically we want to just invite more people into the local business community to try and realize their dreams for starting a business in Bloomington and operating one. All that has to be said with the balance or with the consideration that kind of the fundamental support or undergirding of zoning in effect is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So as you think about some of these recommendations tonight, or some of your questions, or some of the feedback you provide, we would ask that you keep these considerations in mind as we discuss the various, excuse me, options before you hear this evening. So here is a slide just kind of outlining the subprojects that we included in the overall project, or the topic, topic areas. We've ordered these in such a way to try and begin with the ones that have unanimous Planning Commission support behind them as they reviewed them at their last meeting in December. In addition to that, I just want to make a quick note about how the topic areas came together. One could ask, how did you kind of focus on these matters, these particular standards? And part of it was the feedback that the council provided last January, so thanks for that. But a big part of it is just kind of the feedback that we get in working with businesses on a regular basis in the community development department. So they have to get a variety of different approvals and permits and as they build out their businesses and operate their businesses. So some of these topic areas come from that feedback as well. It's just, in addition, just staff anecdotal experiences in working with businesses as they go through the approval process. Yeah, so let's jump into them. Oh, the last thing I'll say about it is that if it's okay with you, Mayor, what we would suggest to do is to just to provide an overview of each item, entertain any questions you might have, and then solicit the feedback and guidance at each topic, if that's okay. Thank you. So the first one is parking flexibility. So as some of you more closely familiar with our parking requirements may know, we do have a variety of different tools where you can request flexibility to our parking requirements. So parking is becoming increasingly a topic in community development work. Certainly, it's important to have the right amount of parking that serves different businesses the majority of the time. There's environmental costs to requiring high levels of parking. Certainly, there is convenience factors associated with them, but in addition to that, there's a high financial cost of constructing additional parking. So all of that can relate to businesses in various ways. But the code has some built-in flexibilities, and we are recommending some changes to some of the code language in this flexibility component. So one of them is attached or connected to the Streamlining Development Project in terms of just clarifying who the approval authority is to deliver some of these parking flexibilities. Most of them right now identify city council as the only authority that, or the only entity that has the authority to grant these flexibilities to our parking requirements. And so in line with some of the changes that were made for various application types as part of the Streamlining Development Project, we would propose to clarify the approval authority on some of those elements to either the staff or the Planning Commission level, depending on the scenario. That, of course, if it's an application that the city council is rendering judgment on, and of course, the city council would still also be, or would be the final arbiter of that as well. So it's really just clarifying who has the authority to approve some of these various flexibility measures. The, the new flexibility measure that we would propose has to do with commercial and industrial buildings that are 10,000 square feet or less. And really, what it's aimed to do is to try and minimize periods of prolonged vacancy at some of our commercial or industrial buildings that sometimes are difficult to reuse, except for in the same way that an existing business that just vacated. So if it was, if it was occupied by an office in a warehouse, it pretty much has to be an officer in a warehouse, otherwise a new business cannot be located there, just simply on the basis of not meeting our parking requirements. So we have a lot of commercial and industrial buildings that were built in the, you know, 70s, 80s, 60s in some cases, that have more limited parking supplies associated with them. So what this flexibility measure would propose to do would, to offer a 25% reduction in their parking requirement just for constrained sites and where the city engineer would deem there no traffic safety concern. So the Y 10,000 and the Y 25%, it may seem somewhat odd or comical at times, but a few parking stalls, in a way, have been the difference for some businesses to say, you know what, I don't meet code. I'm not going to pursue, pursue this particular site because it's just not working out from a code compliance perspective. And pursuing some of the other flexibility measures tends to be a little, involve a costly or difficult approval process, either it's the Planning Commission or city council. So we're proposing this as a by right reduction. The Planning Commission unanimously has supported these recommendations that staff put forward. I would also note that one of the recommended projects on the 2025 Planning Commission work plan is to reevaluate our off-street parking requirements for a variety of commercial and industrial uses. So this is certainly subject matter that we could be revisiting as part of that. So with that, I'll pause, and if there's any questions about this one or guidance that you'd like to provide, I'm happy to receive that.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. And I would. Thank you, uh, Mr. Johnson. And I would point out to the council also on page one oh five in the council packet, it just gives the, kind of the synopsis of the planning commission. So the planning commission gave their full support to this. Uh, any questions on this council or any comments? Can I get a general thumbs up on all of it or general thumbs up? Councilmember Delisandro.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this is, uh, it indicates commercial industry, industrial buildings. So just to make sure I'm clear, this is not impacting in any way, any of the multi-use, like a multi uh, family, like apartment complexes or anything like that, right? This is specifically for those.
Yeah, Mayor Councilman Delisandro, that's correct.
Okay.
Couple of reasons, well, I can, that's correct.
That's perfect. That's all I needed. Yeah. Thank you.
Need. All right. So we got thumbs up on that?
Thank you, Mayor. So.
Moving on.
Appreciate that. And just to confirm that, uh, that's affirmative. Uh, so the next one, uh, and these, we'll start with some of the um, what I, I feel are the easier ones, but rooftop equipment screening. So this is an area, um, uh, depending on the business type, if they're adding additional mechanical equipment, which is essential for operations of some types of businesses. Uh, it can be quite costly to screen uh, some of this equipment. Um, it is valuable from an aesthetic perspective, particularly in areas that are visible along public rights away, trying to protect um, again, that uh, that general welfare. Uh, but there was kind of a problem in our ordinance and in so much as that uh, it did not specify that it's tied to ground level observation from public streets and sidewalks. And so uh, staff would recommend just creating uh, that clarification or inserting that clarification into the code. Um, certainly, equipment that is visible from taller stories of buildings uh, is very difficult to screen in such a way uh, to make it completely um, uh, invisible or blend into the building. So, and that's quite costly to do. Maybe more so the issue is that um, the sides and rears of a site of a building, uh, not screening those portions because ten, those tend to not be visible from the public way. And that's what we're focused on is the public right of way. Um, one other component of this is that this has come up a couple at, a couple times at um, some of our industrial uses where they have exhaust pipes. And then staff has this uh, funny uh, interpretation exercise or get in a circle. And we say, well, does this require screening? And uh, obviously, the taller an exhaust pipe gets, the more difficult or impractical it is to screen it. Um, so uh, we've interpreted that not to trigger the requirement, but best to just insert this uh, into the language to make it more clear. So on planning commission did affirmatively, or I should say unanimously support this recommendation as well.
Very good. Council thoughts on this? Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just quick question with regards to the public right of way. Was there any consideration of, from like residential properties? I understand you can't screen from a multi-story building, but I think one of the concerns that we routinely hear is just from a residence in their living room or bedroom or something like that, having to look out at it. And also, does this impact noise as a sec, secondary? Okay.
Yeah, Mayor Councilman Nelson. So we did review, I think it was uh, for all of these items, we used a pretty consistent list of peer communities that we reviewed because we wanted to be trying to draw apples to apples as much as we could. Um, uh, there are a few cities that they have all different triggers in terms of where the equipment is visible from, uh, visible from. Most of them do it from public rights of way, because in effect, that's what the code is attempting to uh, protect against. But a, a couple of them do note uh, sensitivity to residential uses as well. Um, I would say that that's more in the uh, the smaller grouping of cities that do that versus the larger. Um, with respect to noise, I mean, yeah, we definitely get uh, sometimes we get inquiries about uh, mechanical equipment noise and similar to other uh, noise generating equipment. And if you recall during the data center um, uh, process, we did adopt some noise related um, uh, provisions related to mechanical equipment in terms of spacing that or locating it as far away on a site as possible. So um, it's not a common uh, complaint, but we do have mechanisms in the code to deal with it typically.
Council additional questions? Can we give it a general thumbs up? I'm seeing thumbs up.
Thank you, Mayor and members. I'll keep going on. So this next one is uh, grease interception. So um, uh, frankly and directly, this is one of these, this is the, an item within this project that we actually have the least amount of discretion around. And the reason being is that um, there are both federal and regional regulations around um, uh, um, deploying grease or expelling grease or other contaminants into the, into the wastewater system. There also is uh, in some cases where grease has not been properly handled. Um, uh, at some businesses or other uh, uses. Um, uh, there has been some cost to the public in terms of fixing some of those problems that have occurred as, as part of the sanitary sewer uh, system. Um, so on the basis of uh, those, the federal EPA regulations, as well as the Met Council regulations around handling grease, this one is uh, uh, I think, how do you deal with it, not can you deal with it or not type situation. And that's not to suggest that that was uh, like on the table or one of the proposals that was being discussed. Um, uh, but suffice to say is that this is one that is more federally regulated and uh, regionally regulated by Met Council, who does regional wastewater. Um, so on the basis of that, I think where uh, some change or some um, you know, additional refinement in the, in how the, these policies are executed. Uh, it has to do with uh, really, it has to do with that one-on-one conversation with the business owner in terms of what their options are. Traditionally, the city has started at a thousand gallon external grease interceptor. And the reason being is that that is an industry accepted best practice in doing that. It allows city utility staff to, to intervene uh, outside of the building, uh, if necessary, to address some of those things. The downside of that approach is that that uh, typically associates the greatest amount of cost and expense to the business. And so um, since uh, even over the last few years, uh, utility staff and public work staff have been uh, more intentional about working with uh, various parties about uh, alternative solutions when uh, the operations of the business can warrant a smaller or more uh, cost-effective solution. And this is also another area where technology is actually working in the city's favor and the business's favor, because it's coming up with smaller and more cost-effective solutions as time goes on. So um, uh, the utility superintendent can approve alternative systems to this thousand gallon um, exterior solution. Uh, really what this uh, project calls for is just continued awareness and education and uh, accountability on the staff end, to continue to work with people on a one-on-one basis uh, as they need to um, and, and just continue that partnership. Um, there is some handouts that we have uh, that we can uh, make uh, you know, uh, potentially more accessible or provide additional information for people. So that also is something we're uh, looking at as well, our public works partners. But um, this one in itself does not include any recommendations for any changes to the code on the basis of the, the federal and Met Council regulations. So I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Council questions on this? Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, so I guess the, the, the main question I have is, if we know for a fact that the, that the one thousand gallon external grease interceptor, while a city, uh, uh, an industry best practice, is also number one, an economic burden, but also um, uh, yeah, um, maybe uh, how I would say it, an, um, an over-engineering for a number of different kinds of, of businesses. My question would be, why isn't our regulation doing what we want the outcome to be, which is that for the amount of grease you're going to generate, you need to be able to store this amount before you have to clean it out kind of thing, right? And it's almost formulaic as opposed to this stand, this, you know, mechanism. I'm just curious, eh, eh, because when I have heard from folks that are complaining about this, the biggest thing I've been told is, is, well, there's two things. One, that this is way more than they'll ever need, right? A pizza shop, for example, doesn't need a thousand gallon grease. It just doesn't, doesn't create that much grease. It doesn't do that. It's never going to do that. And secondly, that depending upon who we talk to in the city, the, and this is, you're addressing this with the flexibility question and the education question, but like depending on who they talk to, it was that or nothing, or sometimes they would get a break, or sometimes they could get an alternative solution, et cetera, et cetera. And so the, the consistency of the message out of, out of, out of the city, I think is a very valuable piece of this. I'm glad you're bringing it up and I appreciate that. The question I would ask is, why, why are we enforcing a specific construct, size and placement, when that's not necessarily what's going to create the outcome we're looking for, which is make sure you can control your grease, right? Um, so that's my, that's my overarching question on this. And I, because I think we can do better than, than this i- in my, in my humble opinion, I guess.
Mayor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll invite uh, Scott Anderson to speak to it. He's the utility superintendent. But one thing I'll say, um, just in working with engineering and public works uh, for a while now, is that I think that those uh, individual customer conversations do happen in trying to be amenable to finding the solution, number one. But one of the other challenges we have, and this relates to a whole variety of different uh, planning and zoning issues as well, is that you can have two restaurants and in the code, it's just restaurant. That's the use. But they operate completely different night and day, different menus, different operational characteristics. And one of the things that uh, from an infrastructure perspective, they tried to plan and game out is having uh, the correct equipment that can sustain the use for long periods of time through multiple different operators. But I will certainly invite him up and allow him to speak for himself. Um, or uh, the, the, the unit, rather. Scott, if you want to add anything.
Good evening.
Sure. Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Delisandro. Just a quick point of, of clarity, and I would agree with, with Nick. The, the, I think that, that thousand gallon piece is, is not necessarily the standard as much as it is that best practice designed to meet what specifically is in code, is that effluent limitation of a hundred milligrams per liter. And so there are multiple ways to, to go about that, right? You could say, well, we're not going to install a grease interceptor, but then we'll, we'll monitor our effluent on a monthly or a regular basis to demonstrate that we're, that we're code compliant. I mean, we could certainly attempt to go down that path. Um, we're not currently staffed or equipped to, to be able to perform that type of monitoring and that testing on any type of regular basis on a scale, on a citywide scale. And so um, as, as Nick pointed out, that, that thousand gallon external setup is, is, is that, that BMP, that best management practice that was designed, that was designed by the industry to, to meet that effluent. Um, having it located externally um, prevents a lot of the, the health-related issues in terms of trying to clean that in a facility as opposed to outside. Um, they have, they have historically um, performed on a fairly reliable, um, on a fairly reliable basis. But as Nick pointed out, we have uh, for quite a while, been open to discussions on depending on an individual's um, use um, or practice, um, alternative mechanisms to, to mechanically separate that grease prior to discharge to the system.
So I appreciate the answer. Um, and I, and I, I have full faith that that's the case. Um, the feedback I've received over the last two years has been that, you know, depending on who folks talk to, they get a different story, right? Some folks would get a, that's it or nothing, and some people would get the amenability. So I, I think to your point, um, Mr. Mayor, um, you know, I guess my point is, um, if, if we don't do anything different, then what I would like to potentially see is a, a, a kind of some monitoring and some feedback on how we're doing better about being amenable. So that we don't have, we, we get feedback from folks who are building out these businesses in the coming year or two, to hear that that's going much more smoothly than it has been in my experience with those folks in the past two, couple of years.
Thank you for your comments, Councilmember. And I think, uh, I think that makes good sense, especially with the second bullet point of improved education of, of the situation, I think on both sides, to improve the education, improve the knowledge and, and the discussion. And so I think, I, I would hope that staff would be okay with that. And maybe whether we do it formally or informally, try and make sure we have a feedback loop in some way that makes sure, that, that assures that folks who are facing this one thousand gallon grease interceptor are able to have that discussion and, and find if there are other alternatives available. That make sense?
And I'll make a comment at the end of this, if I can, after, before we move on to the next uh, item about it, if I can have a little bit of time. It, it's more a broad comment on this area about what our community development organization can do to help here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson with a question?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Just a quick follow-up to Councilmember Delisandro. Um, is it possible to monitor the, I think the term you used was effluent? Um, you know, because I know in other areas, uh, we monitor, as an example, stormwater. And you know, an engineer gives us a report about the quantity, the rate, and some third part of it that I don't recall off the top of my head. Um, is it possible to do that with regards to this, so that someone could come in and say, here's the modeling. And then I assume there's, you know, we don't have to monitor every single thing. We can monitor when there's a problem similar to stormwater.
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, um, I think that the, we can, we can certainly investigate um, other avenues to, to try to get a clearer picture on, on source and results. I think the challenge is, um, where you're, if you're monitoring a sewer, sewer shed, for example, where did that, that grease or the, you know, the fats and oils originate from? So you're almost talking about a per premises monitoring system. And again, um, I'm not intimately familiar with what those systems look like, what the costs are associated with them, how, you know, how, how that monitoring is, is performed that's outside, outside of, of things that we've done. I can tell you from a very crude level, um, we have, you know, the, the city um, cleans the public sewer system on a, on a regular basis and, and has different frequencies for different materials of pipes and for different areas. And so for these areas, um, where fats, oils and greases, where, where those become apparent, we're, we're cleaning those sewers uh, four times annually, whereas the next most frequent uh, cleaning system and the, the next most frequent cleaning schedule applies to the oldest system in town, and that's once every eighteen months. So, and, and at a cost of, at, at a per asset cost of about ninety-five dollars versus about two hundred and fifty dollars for these quarterly clean areas per, per, uh, per asset. So represents about eighteen percent of our total uh, sewer cleaning costs to address these, what we call quarterly cleaning areas. Um, you know, we, we, we do televise uh, sanitary sewer system, so we, we get an idea of where these things are occurring. That's how the quarterly clean areas were originally developed. Um, but that's kind of the, the extent of our monitoring knowledge at, at this point.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you for the detailed information. It's always impressive how, how you guys know all this stuff. Um, it, the, the one thing that I would say is I think some restaurants may be open to like, in terms of their licensing and things like that, paying the fee to clean that, to avoid the cost of the grease interceptor, or something of that nature. So if they are putting a burden, I'm always like, look, businesses should pay their costs for sure. But maybe there's a lower way to do that. Um, just, I, I just ask you guys to keep an open mind on this one, if there is a different way to look at things.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Comments on this, Councilmember? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify. I want to make sure I understand. So in code, it is not that they have to have this thousand um, gallon external grease interceptor. It is that they have to have a grease interceptor and that the thousand gallon has been kind of a standard best practice in the field. But you, your team is um, uh, open to working with um, businesses to figure out what is the appropriate size? What does that look like? And then improving educational materials. Correct?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. I, I mean, I for one feel comfortable with that because we're not stipulating that they have to have a thousand gallon external grease interceptor. We're just saying that they have to have one. And as long as staff are working with them to figure out what is the most appropriate, um, I mean, that makes a lot of sense to me. I also, um, and I think Councilmember Nelson, I was, I want to make sure I understood your suggestion. So would they just not have to have an interceptor? They would just, okay, okay. That's a conversation for.
Microphone, please.
It sounds like we're already cleaning those more often than other places, and that's a cost to the city. And I'm just wondering, you know, if there's some type of, as you look at the whole system to, as you said, as we work to minimize the cost on the upfront to put the right size system in there, it seems like we'll still have some cleaning to do. And it may just, instead of spending twenty thousand dollars, I don't even know what that costs, but you know, spending two hundred dollars on a cleaning.
Got it. Okay.
It might be a trade-off worth looking at.
Thanks for that.
But I certainly, I'm not saying just dump the grease into the, yeah.
Just clarifying that. I was like, huh.
My kids have done that in my kitchen. It's, it's not an ideal situation. Yes.
Anything else, Council? Uh, Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. As we're going through the conversation, something just popped in my head. Um, what do we do when businesses change and we approved a smaller vessel for a, say, pizza joint, and then a fried chicken joint goes into that building after the pizza joint changes? So how do we handle that process?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilman Mua, I don't, I don't know that I recall um, encountering uh, an example like that one. Um, I think, um, I think typically we would be looking for those I think typically we would be looking for those calculations that show what those removals are whenever, whenever a use changes. But I think generally speaking, the fact that there would, there, there would be something present is a huge win because there just aren't a lot of them out there.
And Mayor, I mean, if I can add any, shed any additional light, and thanks to Scott, he's been thrown into the spotlight here with less than adequate on my part. But I've been collaborating with the city engineer and utilities, other utility staff who've been working on this issue. But typically there has to be involved some type of trigger, right? And so the trigger typically is some type of complete kitchen rebuild or build out that involves disruption to the utilities in, in the service. If it's just a simple swap out with limited changes in equipment, it might not warrant the additional intervention on this part. So it's, it's one of those areas where staff probably has to make, has to make a professional judgment call on how to handle it.
Thank you. Councilmember DeLisandro?
Really quickly, Mr. Mayor, just to add some color to that, at least from my knowledge and experience with, with some, with some folks, per permitted use kind of swaps really fast. And so if it's a restaurant and it goes to be another restaurant, there's a lot less that's done than if a conditional permit is triggered or if a brand new building is built. And so part of the discretion at staff level and part of the disparity in the treatment, the lack of consistency in the treatment that I've been made aware of through, through constituent discussions, has been that depending on which inspector you get, it goes well or it doesn't go well or whatever, based on these things. And that's one of the reasons I'm trying to get some specificity and clarity about what it really, what we really care about. Because to your point, if there was an effluent rate and, and it was a smaller restaurant and you move to a bigger, like bigger greasy thing, right? You would, you would be able to call it based on the effluent rate metering and say, okay, you need to upgrade. But that won't happen today based on the way we do it. As a point of specificity, my understanding is that where was, there was a, there was a famous Dave's that became, that became North Star, correct? Am I right about that? Yeah, never had to change a thing. They didn't have a hood. Famous Dave's, the greasiest thing you can think of, did not have a hood and North Star was forced to put in a hood because of the way that it went. Now, why didn't it have a hood? And now it does have to have a hood when it was a completely permitted use? Completely random, as far as I understand, there's nothing in code. It was related to the inspectors that were involved in the decisions that they were making. So, so my point is that there's these anecdotes out there and I'm just trying to get to a point of, of clarity where we could be, we could guarantee that we have a consistent process for folks, no matter what kind of restaurant or other, you know, facility they're trying to build. Yeah, thanks. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman?
I haven't had a chance to get into the grease trap, so I'll do that tonight. So it's interesting. So in terms of, and maybe this is the wrong group of people to ask, but when, when, when folks are going from restaurant to restaurant or business to business, is there any standard that they're using? And I, I know I'm kind of taking the, the tone and dipping it on the more administrative side of the, of the house, but I'm just, it's more for curiosity sake than I'm, I'm interested in that, given what my colleagues have asked up here. How is that kind of done? Is that, is it kind of at the discretion of the, of the employees? It's kind of going and kind of looking at these, these, you know, these, or does it, is it, is it driven by? Just help me understand how that, that process operates and works.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly am, been involved with and knowledgeable about a lot of things not pertaining specific degrees, but are very strong comparisons to this type of situation and to Councilmember DeLisandro's comments about how things can go differently at two different establishments. Sometimes the, the detail of exactly the types of equipment that are being swapped in and swapped out are so granular that it actually results in a different requirement or a different professional interpretation in terms of what's the right thing to do to deal with a particular issue. So, you know, odor mitigation, similar issue on a lot of those types of restaurants is what level of new tenant or new equipment triggers odor control? And we've tried to write those things into the code so that it is very clear in terms of what the triggers are. But so much of this equipment is, is so different and robust that it's hard to just consider every different single minute scenario within the city code. As it pertains to the operations of, you know, the utility design folks and the utility engineers and inspectors who are going through this process. And typically, they're actually working with environmental health staff, more so on the, the restaurant build outs inside the building. Utility staff typically would be more involved in plan review if there was an external service line project associated with the business, would be my understanding.
That's, yep, that's, that's correct. And I think to, to Councilmember DeLisandro's earlier point, there, there is an effluent standard. There is a number in code that, that if, and I, and I've had few, not many discussions with applicants on, if you want to demonstrate that your effluent is meeting that standard on some type of regular, ongoing perpetual schedule, you know, we're open to that, knowing that if that, if that effluent is exceeded, now you're coming back and you're retrofitting that practice in place, you know, at that time. And I think that has typically been unattractive to, to most or to the few that, the few times that that has actually come up. But certainly, as, as, as Nick pointed out, you know, each site, you know, the, the triggers being what they are, then, then between planning and environmental, that those reviews take place to figure, to, to determine what's, you know, what's going to satisfy, what, what's most likely going to satisfy that requirement.
So I guess the comment that I want to make, Mayor, and, and I don't think that staff is necessarily doing this, but I would hate to, hate to see it happen where just because there's professional differences that certain people are excluded from being able to, you know, have something in the city and not, and all that. So I just, there's this equity and inclusion sense of that, that, that everyone who's trying to apply for a business or trying to get one set. I don't get that impression that, that this is one of those things or, or that, but, you know, sometimes perception becomes reality out there. And so anytime I hear that, I just want to at least ask the question in terms of what it looks like, so.
Mayor, if I may, just make one last comment is that, I mean, no one I've spoken with through this process has been defensive or not wanting to have additional discussion around this topic. We know that these things and this whole list of things we're going to talk about tonight cost a lot of money. And it's hard to get a business going and operate it particularly in, you know, more challenging economic times. So, you know, I think every staff person I've spoken with is very open and welcoming, welcomes these overall conversations in general and appreciates the attention that it's getting, frankly.
Thank you for that. Council, anything else? Councilmember DeLisandro, did you want to chime in now or?
I, I can, sure, if you want me to.
Are we just looking in general with all of our?
It, it can kind of be a, a general based on this particular topic. If you want to meet just the way to the end, that's fine.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Yeah.
That's great.
Thanks.
So given our discussion here, can we get a thumbs up regarding grease interception? Sounds good.
Thank you, Mayor and members. Moving on to odor control, so just a quick overview of what our standards are. So right now, food uses are required to provide odor suppression if they're located within 250 feet of a residential dwelling. Having a type one and type two hood, and this question came up at Planning Commission, so maybe I'll get out in front of it a little bit. Type one are the larger hoods that, are the grease grabbing hoods you have for, say, hamburgers or frying or other, you know, more intensive cooking. Type two are steam related and vapor related cooking, so baking, coffee roasting, other types of things that don't have the, as much airborne grease. So those are automatic triggers as well as there's a generic trigger around food emitting odors. And so our requirement is that when you're within 250 feet and you have this kinds of equipment, you're installing new equipment, it's a new build that you provide this and that an engineer certify, design the system and put their stamp on it effectively. Most of the cities we certify don't require odor mitigation for food uses. The MPCA at the state level does regulate odors, but only for, not for food. So only for things that are more clearly established or associated with public health related issues pertaining to emissions. So I want to be very clear about that. So most cities don't regulate for odor. The cities that do, we can talk about them. One of them is our neighbor to the north, Richfield. And some of the changes that staff would recommend are more in alignment with the, the regulations of Richfield. But basically, staff would recommend reducing that distance requirement to 150 feet. One of the issues in terms of the science of odor is that the further you're getting from the source of the odor, these odors are now mixing with other things outside of the direct source of the odor. So that is why every odor control measure or regulation that you find around at local level typically has a distance associated with it. Because that is where the odor can potentially pose a concern or a nuisance or a threat to public health, safety, welfare. It's when you're right nearby. One of the things with 250 feet that we've found in terms of that distance or separation is that's also collecting residential properties that are across the street or not kind of right adjacent to a business. So the further that distance goes, it's not to say that there is not an impact at 250 feet. There is an impact at 250 feet. But the, the impact is most acute right next to the odor causing business, if that makes sense. So we would recommend to shift that to 150 feet. We would recommend also to remove the type two hood trigger. There are some type two hood uses like coffee roasting that can generate more strong odors. But typically that can also be handled through the third provision in the trigger list, which has to do with just food emitting odors in general. So requiring it for every non-dishwashing, so type two hood is kind of overkill in our view. So this is the, the key one, maybe just from the cost standpoint, is in speaking with business owners who've navigated this, it has to do with the engineer certification. And the reason being is that odor is not something that can be mitigated to zero. Some engineers are not comfortable living in a world where you're not fully, you're either doing it or you're not doing it. And that's most engineers I've known in my life. So one of the issues here is that some business owners, A, it's hard to find an engineer with this expertise willing to sign it, or B, there's a lack of willingness to do it, or three, it has a significant cost associated with it. So our building and inspection staff and our mechanical staff thankfully is fairly familiar with a lot of these systems. And so where previously the original ordinance favored the engineer certification to get a private party to kind of sign off on the system for, lack of a better term, the building official now is comfortable assuming that approval authority because we do know good systems from bad systems and we can adjust to that point about staff discretion and the importance of having good regulations and consistency. They are aware of what the good systems and the bad systems are and what are appropriate for different situations. So I think what we plan to do there, if this is supported, would be developing some educational materials, kind of setting some basic parameters for different types of food emitting odors and how to deal with them. Option B, and so that's the staff recommendation basically, is to make those changes. Option B would remove the odor control requirement for food uses. Certainly more in line with some of the cities, peer cities that we studied. But some of these communities have less robust commercial and food and hospitality related uses in their communities than Bloomington does. Especially in close proximity, you think about a mixed use development within a restaurant. So that, those are kind of the two options, but I'm happy to stand for questions and take your direction.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think you just answered my question, but just wanted to clarify that this would basically limit this provision to a mixed use development where there was some type of residential or housing right next to restaurants, kind of on the same or just adjacent properties. Not, and so it would avoid the ones where like some people are across the street and things like that. That's the goal of this, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's generally correct. You know, there's always a unique scenario, a unique measurement where it might collect someone across the street, but I, it would be hard to, for that to imagine that.
Because I think that's where I've heard from staff about concerns where you have, you know, a restaurant in a, in a lower level of a mixed use facility and you have the odors just going up to the floors above there versus, you know, we have a number of older scenarios where there's no odor mitigation of restaurants and they seem to work just fine. Thank you.
Any other comments on odor control, odor mitigation? Can I get a thumbs up?
Just to affirm for the record, Mayor, the thumbs up for the staff recommendation in this.
Staff recommendation is what I was understanding.
All right. Thank you so much. With that, I will turn it over to Planner Caston Day to talk about exterior materials.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to summarize some of the areas here related to exterior coatings and materials. A lot of this was taken from feedback that we've gotten from businesses over the year, looking at some comparable cities and neighboring cities and then as well as talking to some local architects for feedback. And so I just want to summarize kind of three main areas that we're looking at in the proposed code amendments. The first being exterior coatings. So our current code doesn't allow painting or coating of primary materials. So when the current standards were passed a number of years ago, if your surface was already painted or coated, you're allowed to continue to repaint and recoat that, but any new materials aren't allowed to be painted. And so that, this gets brought up a lot by businesses wanting to refresh the look of their building, particularly if that building is brick or stucco. But so there's kind of some different considerations to think about tonight. I guess to think about it, arguments maybe against painting or coating. Is that painting brick or masonry can trap moisture and result in disintegration of the brick? It can require regular upkeep of the painted surface and that can mask a brick's natural texture or color. And then maybe on the flip or reverse, thinking about maybe reasons why we're okay with coating is that there's now more options in brick paints and stains that support the breathability of brick. The city does have building maintenance standards that can be enforced. And painting a building can be a cost-effective way to refresh particularly an older building. So with just some of these factors in mind and wanting to reduce costs for businesses, staff is proposing to allow coating of most exterior materials in the city. And then of course welcome your, your feedback or concerns on that. The second area I wanted to talk about, our current code describes primary and secondary materials. And so on the screen, our current primary and second materials that are allowed in the city. And we have a set ratio of 85 and 15. So every facade of a building has to be at least 85% of some kind of primary material and can go up to a maximum of 15% of a secondary material. Again, this kind of gets brought up from some businesses, particularly going into kind of multi-tenant spaces. And then they can run into challenges with this ratio, particularly that only allowing 15% of a facade is a secondary material. So looking at some other neighboring cities, it seems like that ratio is more somewhere like 70, 30, 60, 40. And that our 85, 15 ratio is, is pretty high. And so what staff was proposing is to, to go from 85, 15 to 65, 35. And again, I'm looking for any feedback you have there.
Dakota, if I can, if, Mayor, if I can jump in real quick on that is just, and there was some discussion at the Planning Commission level about how some of these changes affect small business and that's a totally legitimate question and discussion to have. But in addition to, one way to refresh your look is painting a building. Certainly another way is that you'll see some, some businesses want to replace actual materials on their storefront. And so if there's a limitation of 15% of what secondary materials you can use, it really limits the, the types of swaps or changes you can make in the exterior materials. And that's 15% combined of all the secondary materials, not just one secondary material in isolation, just for that clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. And then just the last item here isn't really a policy item and more just a kind of cleanup in the code of our current interpretation, is we just wanted to add some definitions to some of our materials to just be more clear for architects and for business owners on, on what we allow. So the, for, as an example, we currently just list architectural concrete in the code. That kind of covers concrete panels or pour in cast concrete. And the technology of panels has really advanced. And so this is just an example here of, you can have different patterns poured. So the concrete can look like brick, even though it is concrete. Or there's the exposed aggregate where you're seeing kind of the small stones to give it some texture. Or again, that kind of light sandblaster acid etch kind of, I guess, effect on, on the concrete. So it doesn't just look like a concrete panel. And so really what the proposed changes here are just to add a definition on, on what staff already interpret as permitted exterior materials and just wanting to make that more clear for people upfront. There's kind of a, I guess, a catch-all statement in our current exterior material codes where we say like, or an equivalent or better as determined by the issuing authorities. So these are things that we've kind of already have allowed. And again, just want to make it more clear for people upfront to maybe reduce. And again, just want to make it more clear for people upfront, um, to maybe reduce some um, questions from, from applicants. Um, this was just uh, on here as an example, we did make an exception, I guess, in the definition of architectural concrete uh, for this kind of raked or vertical striation finish. Um, to just allow that on industrial um, buildings because it does have, I guess, staff felt a more industrial effect. So on mainly commercial or multifamily buildings, you could do the other stuff and not this kind of finish, but we would allow this finish on an industrial building. So um, just trying to provide some of that nuance in the definitions as well. Um, and then in a similar vein for architectural concrete masonry units, again, there's kind of a number of um, different designs and effects that those can have. So just wanting to kind of uh, account for that in our definition of the material. Um, so I, I think with that, um, we're looking for any um, feedback you have, whether you support or not support on kind of these three primary areas. So either um, allowing coating is a staff recommendation on the sixty-five, thirty-five ratio. And then clarifications on our uh, definitions of materials.
Council, any comments on this? Thumbs up? Uh, Councilmember Muah and then Councilmember Nelson, Councilmember Muah.
Hey Mayor, um, my one question on the coat, coating and painting, would there be anything in place to ensure that, that painting is kept? Uh, because I'm just like, thinking about my deck, right? I uh, repainted my deck and one and a half years later it looks like junk again. So um, just thinking about this for commercial buildings.
Yeah, Mayor and Councilmember Muah, um, we would um, consider that um, in the proposed um, changes that we have. We make sure to make some reference, um, the city's adopted the um, like international property maintenance code. Um, and so we wanted to add that into this exterior material section as another reference for environmental health staff uh, to be able to enforce that if we're seeing kind of chipped paint or any kind of deteriorated um, exterior on the building.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, the percentage for the primary, secondary, does that change at all based on if it's let's go facing a public right of way? So like the back of your building, can you just do secondary there?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, so the current um, exterior materials and our proposed change, it would um, apply to all facades regardless if it faces the um, a public right of way. There are some cities that do change that if it's not visible from the public right of way and do have different standards, but we currently don't have that and we're proposing that here.
And then is there any differentiation based on size of building to the comment of how does this help small businesses? Um, because I happen to own a business that has a building that is almost all um, fiber cement. Um, and it's been fine, we paint it, but to Councilmember Muah's point. So, you know, but it's, it's a five thousand square foot office building, it's not a extremely large building. Um, so are there different standards based on different sizes and things like that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, um, currently there is not. Um, so there isn't currently in our code distinction on the size of the building and um, there weren't any proposed changes here um, around that.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may add to that too, is uh, one small caveat on the not facing public street frontages, there is the uh, incentive in the opportunity housing ordinance that you can have more alternative materials on non-street facing besides, so that's the one wrinkle uh, to that as well. But uh, most cities that uh, Dakota uh, and I have observed from other investigations um, don't regulate based on building size. They typically regulate based on use, so they'll just have different standards and that's similar to what Bloomington does. Um, uh, but other cities also tend to have, uh, you know, five different classes of uh, you know, materials versus just primary and secondary. And so one of the uh, in some of the discussions that Dakota's had with architects is make it simple for us. You know, give us rules to follow and then we can design to that. Um, some of these communities where you have to have very precise percentage calculations with five different classes of materials, you're allowed ten percent of class five, five of class four, yeah, da, 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 it just gets a little bit of chaotic and hectic uh, to, to do their job on their part. So I think they're just seeking clarity and um, uh, give us what the rules are and we'll, we'll flow that way. That's the feedback we got.
Thank you. So I guess my quick comment would be, I'd be open to on, you know, the backside of buildings and things like that, having a lower standard if that's something that could be considered.
Support on this, Council? And I generally support it, my only caveat is I, I so hesitate to print, paint brick because it's forever. And, and that is a tough thing. And we saw that good example, if you recall with our TCF bank example at uh, American Boulevard in Penn, that they wanted to paint that wonderful brick building black to do, to go with the new TCF motif. We didn't allow them to, and six months later they became Huntington Bank, which was green. And so, I mean, I just, it just makes me uncomfortable. I mean, I understand it and I, I know those are odd uh, examples. And I also know that there aren't enormous examples of that, that's a big example, but there, there are many smaller buildings, brick buildings that I'm sure could look a lot better with a coat of paint, so. We good with thumbs up? I'm seeing a consensus of thumbs up, so uh, onward.
Yeah, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor members, and uh, we can look into that additional suggestion that Councilmember Nelson made and we'll report back on that uh, when we present the ordinance for a public hearing. So moving on to our uh, last topic as part of this presentation happens to be um, refuse and recycling storage facilities. Um, so Bloomington, uh, I would say is, is more, you know, as per our peer city research, we do find commonality among some of our peer communities on refuse and recycling storage. We are um, uh, tend to be uh, in a very small uh, group, maybe alone sometimes. And some of our standards, that doesn't mean that they're, they don't have merit or um, uh, they don't uh, prevent a lot of nuisance characteristics. But first, let's just talk about what they are. So uh, our trash standards require trash facilities to be attached to the building uh, for almost all uses and all scenarios. There's some exceptions for industrial uses. Um, in most scenarios, it requires it to be internally accessible from the building. So what in effect that means is it's just a, a part of the building, it's a, a, a building addition to the building. Uh, you can see in the image, the area circled in red, this is a, a legal, this is a conforming uh, trash and recycling facility as part of a restaurant. Um, so in addition to those two standards, we also have um, uh, special finish requirements for uh, food related uses. And typically what that means is uh, cleanable surfaces, so certain types of tile or other finishes that can be cleaned. Um, food use has unique uh, nuisance characteristics associated with it. Um, that also typically means a water source and a floor drain and other things that have to do with the cleaning of the refuse area. Um, so why do we have these rules? Well, there's been a lot of issues uh, that we've encountered uh, over the years and these include illegal dumping, employee safety, unsanitary conditions, vandalism, odors, rodents, flies, insects, lichates, so threats to the storm sewer, uh, basically. Uh, site esth- and uh, site aesthetics. So uh, all of those many issues that I just listed are the primary driver be- behind why we have the standards that we have. The downside of these uh, of requiring uh, facilities to this finish level is that there's significant cost associated with providing it. So that's the trade-off. Um, uh, anecdotally, um, from working on a lot of new businesses versus retrofitting existing shopping centers, the hardest situation to accommodate, meet our standards is retrofitting an existing space, transitioning it, say, from a retail to a restaurant space. That's the hardest one, because they don't have a, a lot of properties in Bloomington that are legally non-conforming for trash. But again, once you change the use, that's a trigger for um, our refuse and uh, recycling storage requirements, uh, particularly for food. So um, there's a lot of benefits uh, to these standards, but it comes with cost. And the hardest area to accommodate it is in the um, the existing buildings, the existing shopping centers of Bloomington. So we went on a uh, tour, um, environmental health staff and I to review uh, some various facilities throughout Bloomington. On the left is a, a code compliant facility, so again, that's very similar to the last image I showed you with uh, a trash room um, on the backside of the building with an overhead door, very common. There's inside the space, there's a, a doorway or an access uh, into the uh, restaurant. And employees can uh, access the space without going outside, very safe. That's, that's the pinnacle of employee safety and uh, operations in terms of limiting the nuisance characteristics to adjoining or adjacent properties and, and uh, dealing with the aesthetic conditions. On the right is a legally non-conforming facility, you could say, well, it's got the overhead door, it looks like it's inside. This is actually a multi-tenant uh, shopping center. And so uh, some aspects of this facility are conforming with our standards, but there is not a dedicated hallway access or internal access to all of the tenants uh, in this space. They can access it by going outside and then using the facility, but it doesn't check every box in terms of meeting our standards. On the left and the right, these are two examples of what planning and environmental health staff viewed as a pretty positive examples of legally non-conforming outside trash storage. You can see that the, the facilities are screened, they're uh, in this, in some cases painted to match the building or aesthetically match the building um, uh, in some way. Uh, they're in the rear of the faci- of the building, so they're really kind of protecting the public ways uh, around the site. Um, they're right near an access door, so it's in close proximity. If you're, if an employee does need to go outside uh, to take the, the garbage or recycling outside, they're not traveling a far distance, which is important. Um, so these are two examples where if you're doing it outside, they're doing it well in effect uh, in various ways. Uh, on the left is another, uh, this is actually a code compliant um, uh, facility. You can see the overhead door and they've wheeled this out for um, uh, for trash pickup day. One of the challenges that staff has encountered is that uh, where some businesses will just wheel out the um, trash on pickup day. Some will just keep the dumpster outside and repurpose that space because real estate is very valuable, as you all know. They can use that space to stock other materials associated with their business. Um, and so even when building the facility to meet the code, uh, sometimes over time that space gets repurposed by uh, the same or a different operator uh, who now occupies the site. The image on the right is something I want to highlight that's very important to the water resource staff. Is that one of the uh, issues with storing uh, trash and recycling outside is that in some uh, facilities, depending on their design, they drain directly to uh, storm sewer. And so that's a big problem, um, and against our regulations, of course. But here you can see actually where there's some um, uh, you know, some waste or uh, I'll use the term affluent, I guess, or I don't know. But uh, some grease's oils, some uh, uh, part of the uh, garbage that's draining towards the storm sewer. So that's obviously not ideal and what we would want to protect against if you were to allow this type of thing. So um, with kind of the initial standards in mind, as well as these kind of um, anecdotes or reflections as part of the tour and kind of identifying what uh, actually works well about outdoor storage versus not in some scenarios. Uh, we kind of boiled this down to three main options of what you can do as um, uh, uh, in terms of uh, the, this regulatory framework for refuse and recycling. One is do nothing, is to keep the standards the way that, the way that they are because they're the most effective at dealing with the ten or so issues I mentioned at the start of the presentation. The second option, in recognition of the fact that our code complying facilities can be accommodated, accommodated um, uh, as part of new construction projects fairly, in a fairly straightforward way, as I mentioned, retrofitting existing buildings is the hardest thing uh, to accommodate. Option two would be maintaining our existing or similar standards for new construction projects. Uh, there could be uh, size elements potentially associated with it, but the, the fundamental issue is the new construction, you're building a brand new building. So it gives you that kind of uh, clean palette. Um, but allow for alternative scenarios for existing uh, commercial uh, and industrial properties. The third option is really uh, probably more in line with what most communities do, is they allow exterior trash and recycling storage, but subject to standards. And so what would those uh, standards be? I'll highlight that here in a minute, just overview again of the planning commission feedback, again, the four members involved in the discussion. Uh, I would say their feedback was mixed, but they mostly aligned with option two in terms of still requiring these standards for new construction. The other thing I would say is that they had uh, you know, lengthy or good feedback around the aesthetics and screening of the enclosure. That it should be of quality materials and should uh, match the building. Um, uh, so uh, that, that was kind of where their feedback centered on. But if you were to allow exterior uh, trash storage in any way, these are kind of the five areas that staff would most strongly emphasize that are important. One is uh, that they're screened and enclosed on all sides, um, uh, in some cases with a roof. Now, you could ask why should a, a trash storage area have a roof associated with, keeps stormwater out of the facility, keeps snow and rain out of mixing with uh, refuse and recycling. Um, storage location should be in close distance of the building, that again is an employee safety uh, consideration. It's also um, uh, if you have leaking uh, garbage or recycling in any way, it limits the distance at which you deposit it into the facility. Um, s- the third one, storage location limited to side and rear yards, so this is just kind of a basic planning zoning principle of trying to keep it in back shop um, uh, scenario. And then the fourth thing, uh, require setbacks to residential structures. One of the uh, challenges of allowing outdoor, of outdoors trash storage is that there's a lot of multifamily uh, apartments that are near our commercial areas. And you don't want to locate one of these facilities in close proximity to residential use of any kind. So requiring some form of setback either, you know, we haven't set on a, a, a hard distance yet, but we're reviewing some of our uh, peer communities on that as well. And then site lighting, be compliant. So um, Bloomington has a long history of uh, working with folks to get their lighting upgraded. Again, this is an employee safety issue, um, if they're taking out trash late at night, which in Minnesota is five o'clock at, uh, during the winter. Um, to make sure that they're doing so in a well-lit area um, for safety. So with that, uh, um, in terms of how to solicit, I'll certainly take your questions, uh, but in terms of soliciting feedback, would request if, if there's some alignment on options one, two, or three, as I mentioned on the previous slide, as well as affirming kind of which standards you would support if you were to want to allow some form of um, uh, exterior trash and recycling storage.
Council, let's start with the options, one, two, or three, um, thoughts on that, Councilmember Loman?
Sorry, I've got questions.
Oh, I'm sorry, question, go ahead.
If you don't mind if I, uh, so on page one seventy-one, uh, you had um, uh, on the right side, it had kind of a outdoor fenced in with a kind of a black door. And my, my understanding is, is that with the current standards that we have, it's, it's inside uh, standard, uh, that there's a water requirement? Is that just forgotten when we go to outside kind of setup? I mean, I imagine in the winter you can't do anything with water. So how is that, how is that handled in a location like that? Is there an indoor room that's then designated for that? How is that handled, you know, in terms of the, that, that's kind of the, the piece I'm just trying to get my head around. So if you put it outside, and I know other cities must do it, so how do they handle that? Uh, or is it just not important at all when you're dealing with food, uh, to have that?
So, so yeah, Mayor Councilmember Loman, and forgive me, I don't have the packet in front of me, I think you're talking about.
Legally non-conforming.
Probably hard to, yeah. Are you timing on my slide or on these uh?
On the slide, yeah, on the slide here, one seventy-one, yeah, it's the, yeah, that one there.
Okay.
The red.
I, I mean, certainly when you have an exterior and with the conditions during the winter, a portion of the year, you're not going to have cleanable surfaces. Uh, you certainly can spray them down with a hose and do other things to clean them, but a good portion of the year it's going to be um.
Yeah, so then how is that handled? Uh, that's the piece I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, and that, that's a good, uh, thanks for that question. So the state does require, there are some state requirements around refuse uh, collection and storage, which are uh, that all cities interact with and require. And some of that is having locking and uh, contained garbage disposal uh, units. So um, these shouldn't be uh, just ha- having open uh, trash storage in effect. Sometimes that does occur either through operational uh, failure or um, uh, just lack of following the rules, frankly. But when these places are uh, inspected, when they're um, uh, when they're uh, dealing with their haulers, I mean, they, they have to buy state approved uh, containers that kind of deal with this stuff. Um, so, but yes, you're right, that food use is food waste outside, you're just basically in a locked, self-conto- uh, contained unit. Um, in terms of the cleaning aspect, um, it's just all uh, within there. They do clean their units uh, occasionally, certainly, but it's not going to be on the same level as cleanable surfaces and the floor drain and inside a contained for uh, four-season condition space, it's not going to be at that level.
Alright, thanks. I'm just struggling with that because I, I've, I've only worked in the facility, it's, it's had that clean room in there, you know, when I've worked in restaurants. So it's just hard for me to imagine how like it's taken care of. So I, I would be helpful for me to take a tour, I think, between now and then. Um, I'll move on because I don't think that we're going to resolve that today. Uh, I, you know, if there's a chance to do a tour, I'd love to do that. Um, and then how many businesses are we losing out on? Um, that are, that are, that are saying this, that, you know, that, that are in these renovated spaces or new spaces in terms of, hey, you know, I, I'm going to Richfield or somewhere else, uh, because you don't, you have such strict standards. I mean, are we losing out on a lot of folks here?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Loman, my answer to that would be anecdotal at best. I wouldn't say that we, we track data of potential uh, tenants uh, who went elsewhere as a result of our standards. Typically, it's not one thing, it's five different things that, um, and some of it's the rent that they're uh, that the building owner is seeking. Um, so it's all part of a big equation, um, whether I can uh, pin it solely on the trash room. I would say in, anecdotally, in uh, the nine and a half years I've been here on a few, it's happened on a few occasions where they just couldn't retrofit an existing space. it's happened on a few occasions where they just couldn't retrofit in an existing space. Um, but in terms of new construction, it's never been an impediment. Um, it's something that I think to a new construction standard, typically they have the ability to provide, um, I would just say the retrofit. So I would just say a few in the time that I've been here.
And I think my last question for you is around the odor in our neighboring communities. Uh, how is that, has that been a, a driving issue? Because I know once we kind of open these standards up, uh, with those multi-uses, you know, typically those folks that are, are located around these multi-uses are, are some of our most vulnerable, uh, residents, or can be, not necessarily all the time, but in a lot of places, uh, the, the concentration of those folks, how is that dealt with and kind of handled with? I mean, is there a, a, a point where you have a problem with the odor that you have to kind of then force, uh, that to, to change it? Uh, what, what's, what's the remedy that's utilized in those locations to kind of resolve that?
Yeah, Mayor Councilmember Loman, so I, I, uh, I don't have the specific citation of the city code standard to point to right now, just on the fly, uh, but certainly, you know, the city community development staff, code enforcement, environmental health would be extremely responsive to something along those lines. But the way that we would, um, that can be mitigating that issue is never allow these facilities in close proximity to a residential use. So it's the setback. It's where are you putting it? And, uh, if you were to go in this direction or support it, there certainly is business or a benefit from a cost perspective to, uh, to business, but it's got to be done in a thoughtful way and a thoughtful location, uh, not just to allow, um, a setback from residential, but also not to impede access, uh, to allow for, uh, operational pickup. So all those things are a factor. Um, typically what they would need to do is, uh, go through a zoning administrative approval process to establish where that new facility could be. If they weren't following that, then they would be subject to code enforcement.
I appreciate that, and we can have for the conversation offline. So to answer your first question, Mayor, um, so I guess I'm leaning towards two reluctantly, so.
Other thoughts, Council? Councilmember Muwa?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would be leaning more towards option three with the staff recommendations, um, because unlike Councilmember Loman, I've only ever worked in restaurants that have been outside and I've worked in both. Uh, if we go back to that picture, ones where they don't have a covering on the roof and the one where they do. And so to reduce odor, the ones that have coverings on all sides of the building, significantly reduce odor that leaks out into the rest of the neighborhood compared to ones that just have a fence around the outside. Um, and so that's why I'd be supportive of staff having, uh, staff's recommendations for outdoors. And when I look at the, um, restaurant makeup in Bloomington, yes, we've never had issues with new construction, but look at the types of restaurants that come to Bloomington. Who are the ones that are able to afford a whole separate room just for garbage? And that's why we have so many fast food franchises. Not that there's nothing wrong, anything wrong with that, right? There's still local businesses, there's still franchises, but that's what drives the cost. You're not going to have the local mom and pops coming in and building a new restaurant because that extra 20, 30, 40, $50,000 that they spend on a room limits them when they can spend, you know, a fifth of that to build this outdoor structure, to have their garbage, still have their employees be safe, but not have that cost burden and allow them to continue to, to, to build Bloomington and have a wider variety of restaurants. So, uh, option three is where I'm at.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am at, uh, option three. Um, and, and I could, I could suggest, I don't know the numbers, so forgive me, but I think if you ask the gentleman at Europolis, um, he absolutely had a harder problem, hard time with building that indoor, indoor facility because again, s- small business, individual business, not a chain, not going to get support as a, uh, you know, from build the suit or anything like that. So, so he built it, you're right, new construction, they solved for it, but it took away his ability to, you, there's a reason the drive-through isn't open yet. The drive-up window hasn't opened yet, and I think he would tell you it, that has something to do with it if he asked him. So, um, you know, I only have anecdotes as well. Um, I am, um, having, having said that, go to Valley View Playlots. Before we had curbside clean, curbside composting, I took my compost to Valley View Playlots every week. There is no roof on a thing that's collecting 100% food, people. And so we can really, we, we really, I get it, but for want of a nail, the kingdom is lost, right? That's the kind of thing I feel like we're doing here. And so I say, open it up, give us, get the standards right, s- resolve the standards or evolve the standards over time, um, but don't limit people, you know? Um, and I'll make more comments later when I have my little platform. Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson looking for three. I, I, I will say, uh, colleagues, if you've ever lived within earshot of a bar or restaurant emptying their glass at 2:30 in the morning, I'm voting for number one personally. And, uh, as somebody who literally grew up across the street from a, a lakeside tavern, um, that, that, that's a, that's a quality of life issue for folks who live, and you don't have to be right next door, I mean, just anywhere close, as they dump glass into the recycling. So I, I think there's a reason for the, uh, the existing standards. I, I, I understand the cost implications of these existing standards, but in addition to the cost implications for the business, there is the livability implications for the neighbors. Other thoughts? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I appreciate your comments there regards to the noise because I know that it would be a neighborhood concern, um, which is why I support the, uh, recommendations of staff in terms of essentially almost enclosing it with a roof. I think that can mitigate some of that, you know, but it doesn't have to be built to the same standards as an interior space with, in terms of the construction and code compliance on that, foundations, all of that. I think it's a, it's a good compromise, uh, between having it enclosed, uh, protected from weather, mitigating noise to a certain extent, but reducing costs significantly for folks, whether they're building new or remodeling, so, um, but appreciate your thoughts on that.
Other thoughts, Council? Here's one I don't think we came to consensus on, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I mean, if, um, if other members want to provide feedback, I welcome it, but, um, yeah, they're, uh.
Well, and just as the planning commission feedback was mixed, it's a.
That's true.
Think you're seeing it here as well.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, I would consider two an improvement. So if you want to compromise on two, fine with me. Um, I prefer three, but two feels like a big improvement to what we have now, so.
If I might, Mayor, just to make sure I'm counting correctly, I, was there three members who were supportive of, uh, option three? But I, I just want to make sure that I'm capturing the, recording my notes correctly.
Councilmember Carter? You haven't waited in yet?
Yeah, no, I haven't. Um, and kind of because I'm wavering, I feel like everybody has brought up very good points. Um, a- and I, I honestly, I could go with two or three. Um, I agree, I think two is at least an improvement. Um, but I think that the, um, challenges associated with three are also legitimate. And so, I don't know, I'm wavering a little bit. I don't know if that's very helpful to you.
Should we, as a council, should we, should we all, uh, can we meet in the middle at two and at least give staff a direction to head? Uh, as we, as it says, they're the last three words of the important part of number two, subject to standards, and the standards will be the important part of this whole conversation. Does that make sense to everybody? I think a compromise where nobody's happy is the perfect compromise, so.
So.
Exactly.
Thank you, Mayor. And what I think what we can endeavor to do is, uh, as we bring an ordinance for you through a public hearing process, we can also try and, um, uh, create some graphics or simulations of kind of what that means in, uh, for existing properties and, um, just to try and put that visual, uh, cue to it as well. But no, thank you, I think that's good direction for now. Um, if I can just quickly touch on that, we have been, uh, engaging with various members of the business community on this process. Of course, we do our Let's Talk Bloomington and we have a survey up. This is some, this is a point where I want to point, point back to Barb Wolf again, is that, uh, I think the Port Authority and their expanded role in support of small business want to continue these, uh, communication pipelines and keep them open on an ongoing basis as opposed to, uh, just addressing issues on a one-off or a work plan, uh, here and there. And so I, I give kudos to Barb and the other port staff, Holly, to support something akin to a miscellaneous issues ordinance where they look at various, uh, things that might come up, uh, on an annual basis, uh, to evaluate with their other community development partners, whether some tweak or change makes some sense. Um, uh, so that, that's kind of touching on the survey component. We've certainly been talking with, uh, directly with some interested parties. As I mentioned, Dakota, uh, Cassin Day did, uh, a roundtable with some architects to talk about exterior building materials and painting. Um, uh, staff presented at a Bloomington Chamber event to kind of get the word out on this, as well as, uh, the planning manager, uh, Mark Guard spoke about this project at the port's annual broker breakfast, so with the commercial real estate community. So I feel like we've been getting the word out pretty well, uh, about this effort. And then just to outline our next steps, we have our study session this evening. We'll, uh, lean in and appreciate your feedback and, uh, prepare an ordinance and, uh, we're endeavoring to bring something back through the planning commission in March and we'll be back in front of you, uh, in April of this year, um, uh, assuming no, uh, delays. So, and I mentioned the continued engagement with the Port Authority, uh, staff. So that's, that's what we have for you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Councilmember DeLisandro, do you want to put a bow on this with some of your?
Yeah, thank you very much.
Condensed?
Absolutely, this is great. Uh, uh, first off, thank you, staff. I, I, you, you listen to council, you've heard our, the concerns from the community that we've been echoing up here, um, and you brought back real positive changes. So thank you very much. Uh, by the way, congrats, Nick, Mr. Johnson, on your potential, or your new gig. Uh, we'll miss you, Glenn, but thank you for stepping in in such a big way, um, on this one especially. So, so here's where I think the community development team can help, right? Um, part of so many of what things that we just talked about have to do with the fact that we don't have enough, uh, buildings built to suit these types of businesses today. So I, I, I've, uh, you know, when you think about the strip mall at Penn, uh, and 90th, for example, right? We have, uh, we have, uh, great, uh, restaurants in there. We have, uh, Kenny's in his roast beef shop, we have the folks at Co Two and everything like that. Um, if, if you wanted to take the vacant space right next to it, you'd go through hell. The, the hell we just described to try to get that, even though a restaurant is sitting right next to it. Why wouldn't the people who that own that strip mall build that to suit and let, let us go nuts on getting them some, some, some rental, own, you know, some lessees by coming in and working with the community development team to say, here are the standards, put them in and we can help you like get tenants because we know that there are people, like the wonderful people who didn't win our Hatch Bloomington Challenge, for example, who want to, who want to put a, a, a restaurant or a business in this city. Um, but we don't have, we don't, we don't, that engine doesn't work. And I'm not saying it's our fault, not at all, I'm not blaming anybody, but I would love to see that kind of thing happen. If these standards are so important to us, why aren't we making sure that this stuff is being built so that when these people come, we know we have a place for them? Because the, the, I know you asked a question about how many people we've lost, I only know of three, but all three of them ca- cited this particular issue or a combination of these issues is the reason, because what they could do, they could go to Adina or Eden Prairie and find it already built for them and they didn't have to take on the expense. And so my comment is, using this in and of itself, this is great work and I think we're going to make a lot of headway. But I think there's, there's an opportunity for us to think outside the box here a little bit and, and work with our community development partners, the, 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 the real estate developers and the brokers to tell them, there are opportunities here if you would install some of these things. Um, that solves the problem, for example, Councilmember Muwa, that you mentioned, which is like, how do you go from bigger to smaller? Well, if the, if the actual builder would take on the work of putting that thousand gallon external, uh, grease interceptor in there, these people wouldn't have to solve that problem. And it could change hands 95 times and it wouldn't matter because the thing is there because that's our standard. And so, um, it would be wonderful to see that kind of work and I'm, I'm, I'm encouraging the community development team to the extent that they can to kind of take that on and think about that, um, because I think it would solve a lot of these problems. Um, I, I feel like the burden, putting the burden on the person who wants to open the restaurant is not really fair, right? Um, when all they're looking for is a place that's ready for them to open the restaurant. And we're saying, no, no, you have to make it become a restaurant before you're allowed to open it. And that feels weird to me, especially when we have the developers sitting there going, I'll take what you can give me because the second you leave, now I've got a ready-made restaurant. They get all the benefit and not putting any effort in to make it possible. And that's just, that feel, doesn't feel very small business friendly to me. And again, not our fault, but something maybe we can work on with that group of people. Thanks, that was my comment. Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to chime in on anything? If not, thank you, Mr. Johnson. We will wrap up item 5.1 and now move to item 5.2, featuring Mr. Nick Johnson. Good evening, welcome.
You're stuck, you're stuck with me, I'm sorry. Um, so, uh, yeah, I invite, uh, Vice Chair Cookedon, uh, Cookton, Phil Cookton. Uh, if you don't know Phil, he's served on our planning commission for, I think, four and a half, five years now?
Four and a half.
Four and a half years. So, um, thank you for Phil, and he's also being a little bit of a pinch hitter tonight for Aubrey Albrecht, uh, who unfortunately was a little bit, uh, ill and, uh, couldn't make it this evening, but thanks to Phil and thanks to all of our planning commissioners who, uh, attend all of our meetings and provide really sound feedback and really granular, uh, analysis and, uh, provide really excellent perspectives just as community residents on all these different changes that we're making, um, in terms of how we regulate land use and our zoning code. So with that, um, uh, Phil is going to help me present, uh, the planning commission work plan, uh, for this year.
Yes, our 2025 planning commission work plan, uh, before we get started, I did want to make sort of a call to the public because you probably have more viewers than we do. But, uh, some of the comment feedback we get at the planning commission, and I'm sure you hear the same thing, is that I just found out about this item, why didn't I know about it sooner? My neighbor just told me about it yesterday and I don't feel prepared to speak to it. A great way to be prepared for some of those items, especially some of the more controversial ones, is to follow the planning commission. We see those items before you all do, and in fact, we see some items that you all never see because we have final decision-making authority. So if people have been caught off guard in the past or feel a little unprepared or wish they were just more informed, I very much encourage them to follow the planning commission. We meet two to three Thursdays a month right here in the chambers, we're on TV, we're on the YouTube channel, uh, we're there for you. We also hold public hearings, just like you all do. Um, I always say the planning commission is the lowest form of government, there's nobody below us. But the benefit to that is that we have the most time to spend on these applications. We give every one of them their full attention. We, we do not have consent agendas, we give everything, it's full of tension. And so if you want to get your voice heard, a great place to start is the planning commission. So, moving on to the presentation, then we'll start with the 2024, uh, planning commission accomplishments as we've wrapped up the year. There's a lot on this slide, so we've kind of set it up like a good mixtape, okay? We're going to start high with the plans and the rezonings, and we're going to mellow out a little bit with the code amendments, and then we're going to finish you off high and strong with the development reviews. So we'll start with the planning and rezonings, um, in concert with the Lindell Avenue retrofit plan on, uh, Lindell. We did some proactive rezonings, 94th Street, uh, moving some of the zones to B4. We also looked at our electrical vehicle infrastructure plan this year, uh, reducing that speed limit to 25 miles an hour on our local streets as part of resident feedback. And sort of, uh, sort of our, our usual things too with the planning, uh, pavement management plan and also the Rosa, Rosa Development Proforma Discussion, that's over at Park and Fly, a lot of conversation about what's going on over there. The TIF review at 700 American, 700 American is American and Lindell, and a well-needed review of the South Loop District Plan, which we're still in progress on, but well overdue, and we're excited to be reviewing that. In the code amendments category, uh, some of the heavy hitters here with the signed code adoption, the OHO, that's the Opportunity Housing Ordinance, we looked at that again, as we do almost every year, uh, some review of the environmental standards ordinances, uh, and short-term rentals, a lot of housing things like short-term rentals this year, we took a look at on the planning commission, just like you all did. Uh, we'll, we'll move then to the third column here, which is our development reviews. Uh, some, some big projects this year, of course, the Kennedy and Jefferson High School Stadium projects, got a lot of attention in the community, but we're excited that those are proceeding forward. Ever Apartments, that's the new name for the apartments on the north side of 494, that's between, uh, East Bush Lake and West Bush Lake. They are out of the ground. If you have turned your head all the way to the side as you're driving on the highway there, you'll see some foundations coming out of the ground, which is exciting. BCS, that's Bloomington Central Station, Phase 5, that's on the northwest corner of that site. They are not out of the ground yet, but I imagine they will be in the spring.
We'll see.
We'll see. Okay. We'll see. Luther Kia, that's one we just saw a few weeks ago when you all did as well, Luther Kia coming in. Dick's House of Sport, that's over at South Town Center. A lot of discussion there, but we're proceeding forward there. Full-Tilt Tavern on Normandale Boulevard, the Bryant Lake Park renovations and many conditional use permits and various application, variants applications as well. Moving on then to what we're, what we've got coming up here, so and why we're here. So why we're here is that the Planning Commission is required to submit to you all our annual work plan. And that's what Nick will be walking through here in just a second. On that annual work plan, 30 total projects, over 3,400 hours of staff time dedicated to that. 21 of those projects will be led by Planning Division staff and 13 of those 30 are carryover projects from 2024 that we're still working on. Nine projects listed as potential for 2026, so a little bit more in flux there, but we are looking at 26 and have shown nine projects there. And the Planning Division staffing remains constant for 2025, but as we touched on the last application, the Planning Manager Transition will be taking place in 2025 as Mr. Mark Agard drives off into the sunset at 25 miles an hour, of course. And we are welcoming in Mr. Johnson as the new Planning Manager, which we're very excited, so.
Yeah, thank you, Phil. And I wanted to do an ode to Glenn, but he made me sign an agreement that requires me not to do that. But maybe there's more opportunity for that later. But yeah, we just wanted to put the kind of awareness or the asterisk on it that, you know, we're losing a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge and continuity in terms of the leadership of our division. So it's kind of that you don't know what you don't know kind of thing. And so just putting that caveat on it that, you know, that transition may impact staff dedication to long-range projects in unanticipated ways. We will have an empty chair for a brief period of time, but hopefully we can get that filled soon with someone who's fantastic and continues to push this program forward. So yeah, similar to last year, we're going to group our projects in kind of these five buckets. It was well received by Councilmember Lohman, I remember. So we're going to give it one more try. And maybe we'll refine it or change it up next year. We'll see. But so yeah, in the, in the buckets of housing, so certainly as Vice Chair Cookedon mentioned, there's a number of carryover projects that we're making good progress on. Couple of new projects I want to highlight though, the fence ordinance review. I know that this has been discussed at the council level a few times. The corner lot study standard, so Bloomington effectively for its low-density residential areas requires two front yard setbacks. You know, there's a mix of communities that will either take that approach or have reduced setbacks or have other kind of zoning performance standards that relate to corner lots. And this can have kind of cascading unintended consequences in terms of lot size setbacks, other things that can inform development potential and housing creation. So it's a good thing to look at. It's been some time since we've looked at our height limits map. So for those that don't know, we have a map that establishes what the maximum building structure height is across the community and it's been some years since we've looked at it. There's also some potential there. And then a good informational item, I know that there's been a topic of discussion at the council recently, but homeowners associations. So especially those that have large capital needs or structures associated with them, we're going to try and gather some, some data and just provide a current snapshot as of 2025 as to kind of where they're located and what types of structures they have and what their deeds are generally. Moving to the business and economy, what we've spent a lot of time talking about tonight, I'll highlight the not carryover projects parking requirements review. So obviously changing travel behavior around the kind of stemming from the pandemic, but also from, you know, online retail, retailers and delivery vehicles and those types of things has changed a lot of parking supply and parking utilization in a lot of all communities really, but suburban communities definitely. So we want to look at that. Commercial vehicle parking in residential districts, this is one of the areas that is a most very common code enforcement scenario. And with kind of increasing prevalence of people taking company vehicles home and take-home vehicles, I need to review those standards. When we adopted the signed code, we committed to you to do a one-year review in terms of how it went and we'll be bringing some modest amendments to our signed code with that one year of data of what we've learned during that time. Incentivizing art code amendments, this one encouraged by the Community Development Director, want to shout her out for this one and the commercial vehicle one actually as well. But seeing how ways we can kind of incentivize more art installations in our development in terms of how our zoning code interacts with them. As you know, we are underway in the airport parking facilities study and moratorium. I believe that expires in October around that timeline, or at least we're in the process of doing that. So I want to add that to the work plan. Yeah, those are the things I'll focus on. Transportation, so we continue to do the American Boulevard Transit Way. I know Kirk Roberts and the consultant, Adele Hall, were here recently to get your thoughts on American Boulevard quarter. So that continues to go for the Normandale and 84th Street pedestrian bridge project. That's an element of the Normandale Lakes Office District Plan. Again, just additional transportation project support and our traffic and engineering staff is also committed to delivering on the livability of local streets project. That's kind of evaluating their policies around street reconstructions in terms of when they construct sidewalks or narrow streets or kind of what their standard template is and what their opportunities are. In terms of the environment, we are recommending some not led by planning staff, but supporting an effort to do native habitat and wildlife educational initiatives. This kind of builds on current parks and rec programming as well as other natural resources efforts underway. Planning staff are certainly going to be available to support the Urban Forest Master Plan as well as the Climate Action Plan. These are all different elements that are kind of running on a parallel track to hopefully really improve those areas. And then just in the continuous improvement bucket, the big thing is starting to prepare for the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. So later this year, I believe in March, the Met Council is going to be adopting their regional 2050 plan. And so that starts off the process of, of cities kind of getting organized and being thoughtful around how to design a comprehensive plan process that's very forward in terms of community engagement and really capturing what that community vision is, but also really thoughtful about the schedule in terms of how to deliver all the various elements. City of Bloomington has to adopt its next Comprehensive Plan by the fall of 2028. So it's really just reserving staff time to start to think about community engagement and a broader staffing schedule for that effort. And then we're still, we're getting closer on a fee study of our development application fees. And of course, we have our very, very popular annual miscellaneous issues ordinance, which always gets good discussion. This is what we're thinking in terms of project priority and timing, kind of follows similar templates of, you know, front-loading some of the work that's already underway and getting into some of these second priority projects in the latter half of the year. Again, we try and space out the Planning Commission and City Council public hearings and study sessions so that it's all as smooth as possible in terms of, you know, in consideration of your capacity. The other thing I would mention, and we don't have a slide of it, but we also put together that supplemental matrix, which really identifies trying to get in front of other boards and commissions and opportunities for collaboration. Planning staff, I think, has been to a few HRA meetings and Port Authority meetings and sustainability. And so it's really trying to just build those bridges. We do that as staff, of course, but doing so with the groups. And we held one concurrent meeting with the HRA Board this year. And my just reflection of that is that they very much enjoy interacting with one another and Phil can probably speak to that better than me. But I think those are a hit and do have good benefits. So the similar questions as the last year or so, but are there any projects that you believe should be removed or delayed from the 25 or 26 list? Are there any projects that should be added? And if so, you know, what should potentially be removed associated with that? I do have the, we try and kind of match hours for hours if feasible. And it's an art, it's not a science. I'm not going to say it's a science, it's an art. But we try and do our best with that issue and then reprioritization, is there any first priority or secondary priority projects that should be reprioritized in some way? But with that, I'll stand for questions and Phil's available to provide the commissioner perspective as well.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Counsel input here. Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question. I didn't notice, would you mind going back to the work plan, just the matrix there real quick? I don't see, I don't see any additional item related to Lindell Avenue and I was just kind of curious about that. I know we did the stuff last year, which is great, but I don't see anything moving forward here as we continue to try to do that retrofit. I'm curious if that's on purpose.
Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, thank you for that question. So we still have an internal work group that meets quarterly to, to work through issues relating to the retrofit and certainly whenever there's development potential on that's, you know, under consideration or just ideas, we try and keep that group well informed. The next, we've done a lot of the zoning elements of the plan. The next real piece is doing a corridor study, is to deal with the facility itself, Lindell Avenue. And the traffic engineer, I wouldn't say it's written in permanent Sharpie, but it's, he's, you'll notice it isn't the 2026 list to do the plan and that's just a function of funding. But yeah, that's our plan as of this point is to do that corridor study in 2026.
Thank you. Second question. How much of your, how much time is not allotted here in the sense that like normal, normal developments that could come up that you're not, you don't have a bead on today? How likely are they to be able to be worked into planning, et cetera? So for example, I'm making this up, but if the Fong's Restaurant plat was sold, right, and somebody came with the plan, you wouldn't necessarily have it on here today, but you'd want to work on that. How does that get fit into this plan? Thanks.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, so thanks for those questions. We do have staff who are more operationally dedicated to development review. And so where the impact can be to the work plan is that if, if there's so much development activity occurring that you have to pull in more of your staff, your planners who have the ability and technical expertise to do development review and are effectively guiding it as well. But you, when you have to pull in those additional resources to help support that because of the workload. So as you know, we're subject to 1,620-day action clocks in all development applications. So that's not the, it's not a discretionary task for what we need to do. We have to process it. The Planning Commission has to review it a certain amount of time for applications that you review as well. So it's just a matter of deploying resources. The way that we create it is we try and create a model on the basis that half of our Planning Division staff effectively are reserved for long-range planning. And so if in a year where there's heavy development review, it's going to take from that bucket in a year where it's a little bit slower, it gives us more opportunity to deploy those resources to long-range planning. So that's, that's kind of basically how it's built.
Councilmember Lohman and Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lohman.
So just real quick, I know that this body had, had conversations or mayor questions about the Penn American District Plan. And while I wasn't one of those people, I wanted to just be sure that that landed somewhere. I don't know if that's way down on the, on the list. Maybe there's a third tier list or something like that, but I do know that there was a number of council members that had wanted to have a conversation about that Penn and American District Plan.
Mr. Johnson?
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I'd have to know more of the specifics. I'm not familiar maybe with that discussion.
Probably the worst person to talk about it because I, I, yeah, so if somebody else wanted to bring it up, I just wanted to, I know we had talked about it and I wanted to just, we're right here, right now. And I just wanted to be sure that we didn't miss that, so.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just following up with Councilmember Lohman's comment. My thought on that, Councilmember Delisandro may disagree with me on that, but my thought is that was just something that we were going to get back as information and then decide if we wanted to go further with it. But I didn't know that'd be a full planning work plan study type item. Is that your? Okay, we're just, I think, looking to get where is that? You know, we had, I think it was the Luther Kia development. Was that the one? And we're looking to get some more information on because it doesn't seem to quite fit right in there. So I think, at least from my perspective, I can work with SFA and our city attorney, or not city attorney, you don't have to worry about it. I'm not going to worry. Our, our city managers. So, don't worry, it's just an ordinance. It's fine. So anyway, we'll, I'll get more information out to that so that you guys understand what I was asking for and I think same. So. The question that I had, Mayor, if I might continue.
Please.
Was regarding the HOA plan. And I know that that may dovetail potentially with our legislative agenda. We've, I think, all received a number of communications with regards to challenges that a number of HOAs for large multifamily housing are having with regards to insurance. I don't think that's the intent of this study, correct?
Mayor, no.
My only question was if any of the information, as you do a study of the overall market, how many we have, what they look like, that information may be good for our, our representatives who are working on this issue to be able to share that information. That was the only thing. I just wanted to connect those two dots as a potential opportunity to help some of them because my biggest concern is, you know, either the fees go way up or they can't get insurance. But if the fees go way up for their insurance, all that does is take money away from their ability to maintain those buildings in the long run. And then we run into similar issues that we've seen in the community where we have a building that wasn't maintained over a long time and trying to find a solution for those folks. So just wanted to connect those two if you're going to.
Thank you. That's helpful feedback.
Others? Well, it looks like once again this year, you've got a pretty full plate. And appreciate the thoughtful plans that go into your plans, just because it, I know it's, it takes a lot to consider all that we've got going on and all that we've got coming up. And to have the, the capital plan, the comp plan on the horizon already just blows my mind because I think we just finished the comp plan, didn't we? And we're back at it again. So I, I think this is a solid plan for your, your project timing and priority and, and navigating the, the change in leadership will be a challenge for, for you, but I have complete confidence in the work that our Planning Commission can do and that our planning team can do. Others?
Thank you, Mayor, for those kind comments.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was only one thing I wanted to potentially consider. I don't know where we landed on it and so I wanted to put on there whether or not we thought we resolved it or whether or not it was something that we were going to add. If you recall, and it was mentioned a little bit earlier, that the questions around sound and mitigation related to mechanicals for data centers specifically. I think the last time we had a meaningful conversation about it, we, we, I, I was personally stating that I believe that you could, you could define a data center in such a way that you could give special, specific requirements to that particular type of, of, of business that might need more, more, might need more oversight as it relates to sound and other things. And so I don't know where we landed on that, but I know we had that discussion. The question I would ask is, is that something that you all have maybe ancillary been looking at or it's come up a couple of times? And, and you were thinking about it and should it be something we work on? Or, or would you, would it be better that we wait until we have another data center coming to us saying, hey, we'd like to build one here? And then we make a point of, of, of doing that work as part of, of that development review? I don't know what the right answer is, but I do think, I think the open question I always had was, well, why do we feel like we can't define the data center specifically and make specific requirements for it? Because it's a pretty easy definition in my mind, but I don't know why it, I may not, I may be oversimplifying.
And I don't know the answer to that either, Councilmember. And I, and I would think if it was easy to do, it would have been done already. And I don't know that other cities across the country have really got their arms around what the term data center means and I, I don't know. I don't know what I don't know about that topic, so.
So Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, we actually, we, we worked on an ordinance in 2022 that you all adopted, that we did define data center. It's in our zoning code. It is a defined use. And so, and it does, it is subject to noise standards and that's kind of pointing back to our noise, noise requirements around mechanical equipment about placement. But the key element of those provisions that were adopted was buffering from residential uses. So in effect, if a new data center were to be established, it would have to be located in such a way to be a pretty far distance away from residential uses. But I certainly can, you know, go through the typical channels and provide you kind of an informal report, report of what those code standards are and.
Yeah, we could take that offline then. That's fine. I think the issue I had was that I think we were asking data centers to conform to what everybody else conforms to. And I felt like it needed a higher, it needed a higher standard than the regular, which is where the definition becomes important, right? So, okay, yeah, I'll take it offline with, with Mr. Johnson then. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Counsel, anything else? If not, counsel, I would look for a motion to adopt the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan as attached to the City Council packet. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Mua, to adopt the 2025 Planning Commission Work Plan. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Mr. Johnson, thank you much for your work and the entire planning staff. Phil, thank you for your being with us tonight and thank you for your work on the Planning Commission and your long-term work on the Planning Commission. That institutional memory is just so, so very valuable. So we appreciate it. And if you could pass our thanks on to the other members of the Planning Commission as well, we'd appreciate it.
We'll do that. My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Counsel, we're moving on in the agenda now and we're going to move on to a series of appointments that we have to make for the coming year. And these are our annual appointments that generally take place at our first council meeting of the year. And then the first one is item 5.3, our appointment to the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association. Currently, Fire Chief Yuli Seal, Chief Financial Officer Lori Economy Scholler and City Councilmember Dwayne Lohman are ex-official members of the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association Board of Trustees for 2025. Or for 2024 currently. So for, for 2025, moving forward, Councilmember Lohman, interested in continuing on the Relief Association?
Yeah, I'd like to continue on that. And then there's just one little clerical update we need to make. We need to make it from last year's 2014. It's actually my starting time on the, on that relief association rather than 2015.
Got it. And I see that on the, on the agenda item. So if we can make that change, that Councilmember Lohman has served as the elected official member since 2014. And then counsel, I would look for a motion to reappoint. then counsel, I would look for a motion to reappoint Bloomington Fire Chief Yuli Seal, Chief Financial Officer Lori Economy Scholler, and Councilmember Dwayne Lohman as ex-official members of the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association Board of Trustees for the year 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to make the appointment to the Bloomington Fire Department Relief Association. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you so very much, Councilmember, for serving there. Item 5.4 is our appointment to the I-494 Corridor Commission. I believe currently, if I have my, currently, Councilmember DeLisandro is the, our appointee with Councilmember Rivas as an alternate and Lynn, excuse me, and Glenn Markergard was our, our staff member. Councilmembers looking for confirmation, Councilmember DeLisandro, if you'd like to continue with that. And then I would, motion that we would, or I would propose that Kim Bergeren from our community development staff be appointed to do, to fill that staff role.
I'm, I'm fine with continuing in that capacity. I know Councilmember Rivas isn't here to speak for himself, but.
Given that, I think we're.
Just leave it.
I say we reappoint him. And if he doesn't like it, we'll, we'll deal with it in the future, right? Let's get him reappointed.
Okay.
So I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmember DeLisandro as the city's representative and Councilmember Rivas as the alternate and Kim Bergeren, I keep wanting to say Bergeren, you know, Bergeren, as the staff representative to the I-494 Corridor Commission to fill terms expiring on December 31, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mua, second by Councilmember Lohman, to make the appointment to the 494 Corridor Commission. No further counsel discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you much, Councilmember, for your willingness to serve and Kim for your, she's here somewhere, for stepping in there. Thank you so very much. Item 5.5 is our Sustainability Commission Appointment. Currently, Councilmember Lohman is our current member serving on the Sustainability Commission. Councilmember Lohman interested in continuing?
I am interested in continuing with this. And I have talked with staff on occasions about some, some changes that could be made as well, with this as well. Because I, I really would like to have a backup person on this. And there's a mother, a couple of other ideas, but they're not well, well fought out. So I want to, I don't want to necessarily lay that out, similar to what we have with the HRA situation. But, but I am interested in continuing. I do know there's interest on the, on this board of this. So I.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm actually interested in proposing something a little different. And it isn't specific to the Sustainability Commission, although it happens to be that the Sustainability Commission is the only one that's in this particular position. None of the other commissions actually have city council representatives. We have, the HRA does and the port does, but those are authorities with budgets. And that makes total sense, right? I, I'm, I don't have the history as to why the Sustainability Commission has this. I know that creative placemaking has the option to. And I actually kind of like that language. I was looking at that not that long ago. I, I'm curious if what we do here is put a moratorium on, on positioning this one and look at the commission council appointment concept as a whole and come back with a uniform way that we as a council want to look at appointments to these commissions. If they're intended to be volunteer, if they're intended to be volunteer outside commissions, maybe the right thing is for no, nobody from council to be on any of them. Because then they have a fair and unbiased voice. And then they bring that to us and we are the counterbalance to it or whatnot. I don't know. But it, as I was thinking about it last year, if you recall, I thought about, well, creative placemaking is moved, moving to citywide. Maybe that means we should have a council member on it or whatever. And then I started thinking, well, why are there such disparities? Like, why doesn't HRC then have one? And why doesn't Parks and Rec have one or whatever? And it just felt like maybe we should stop, take a look, come up with a uniform commission policy and bring that back to council. So I throw that out there, no, for no reason other than seems like good timing at this point. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. I do think that's an interesting idea. I know when we, we started the commission, one of the things I wanted to make sure that we did was have a council representative on there because of the, the import of this particular topic for the entire city. Now, this, you know, if we were to follow this particular idea, which I think is an interesting idea, I am currently the vice chair of the Sustainability Commission. Our chair is going to be up for reappointment this year. So it does create some logistical issues as well. And I am in a leadership role with the Sustainability Commission. So, so I don't know. I, I personally think it's kind of, you know, it would be nice to have heard that earlier rather than just tonight, to kind of make a split decision or change.
So just, just to be clear, you said that the chair is up for reappointment?
She is, yeah. Theoretically.
Okay.
Yeah, we could have. So I, I just, I think we've seen a lot of change over this year. And my recommendation to this body is I think we should consider that, look at this and a number of other items that are there. But I think we, we need to be sure that we're, in particular with this particular body, providing stability as we kind of move forward. It's a lot of change that happened over this year. And we had some conflict over the last year.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, so Sustainability Commission is the only one that has a council member? Okay. I mean, I know I have asked this question in the past too. Like, why doesn't the Advisory Board of Health have a council member? And so I'm, I think it's a really good question. And I mean, to me, it does feel like there should be consistency in how we approach the commissions. So, so I'm supportive of your idea.
Other thoughts?
And I, okay.
Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson, please.
So I just want to clarify with Councilmember DeLisandro, if your recommendation is to do that tonight. Because I think it has a lot of merit to look at to have that consistency on this commission. Or if you're recommending that we take and group that in with some other things and look at all of them in totality and make that decision later? Is it, I'm just trying to get to where you're at on that.
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, I was suggesting a moratorium on this appointment and a review of commissions as a whole. That's what I was recommending. Just so that we didn't, we didn't have a situation as, as Councilmember Lohman is stating, where we would appoint someone and then remove them through some change we were making. I didn't want to do that. This is, I mean, if I may be blunt, there, if, 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 if we as a body wanted to appoint somebody other than Councilmember Lohman tonight, you'd still be in the situation where you're vice chair and now you're not in that position. So that would, that change might, would have occurred either way. That's what the yearly appointment is for. And I'm surprised that they elected you as vice chair personally, given the fact that you're not part of the three year appointment cycle. You're a yearly appointment cycle. So that, that's, this is the kind of thing I'm talking about where we don't have consistency in the way that things are being applied. And so I, I'm just trying to dissolve for that so that there's clarity for the commissioners about when they're expected to have council member input, when they're not expecting council member input, how free are they to have their own conversations that come to council, you know, all those kinds of things. And it feels like it's not consistent depending upon the commission at this point. Thanks.
Councilmember Lohman, thoughts?
Well, I mean, I think it's kind of unfair. We have other bodies that are out there as well, HRA and Port. And I understand that those are, those are other ones. But those are also, we have, we have, you know, we're not, we're, we're not, you know, those ones have appointments and they're structured and set up for appointments by, by council. And we, we did, when we put this together as a body in the past, we had a council member on this, like those other, other bodies. So I, I do, you know, regardless of, you know, kind of feel singled out here. And those other bodies were not putting a moratorium on those appointments or, or stopping those appointments, you know, for HRA or for Port or for any of those other ones. And while, and while those are not, while those are not commissions, but there are, the general public does serve on those as well. The only difference in that is the, the title. So, you know, the direction I wanted to go in is, is, so I don't know. And I think it's kind of, kind of unusual that we're, you know, we could have had this conversation earlier on. And why we're having it tonight, just, it does put the, the commission in a very tricky position. So, but, you know, I certainly, you know, well, I'm open to whatever this body wants to do with this. But I do think it's very unfair. And it's something I've, you know, certainly been very passionate about for a number of years, trying to get this thing up and running and starting. And I'm very interested in, that's part of the rationale as to why we had, you know, a, a council member as a part of this and, and on this, this particular commission. So I'll be very sad to, to leave it in this, this type of shape, especially since I participated in the, in the planning for, for next year. So.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I'm just, Councilmember Lohman, I'm sorry that you feel like you're, I mean, if it seems like you're taking it very personally and I don't think it's.
I'm being pushed off.
But I, I do want to, I do want to say that last year, when we talked about this appointment, you also were like, well, we should have a backup, right? Like, and I do think at some point, it's also not fair to others on council to never get the opportunity to be serving on a commission because one council member wants to continue year over year. And so I, and that aside, like, I, I appreciate your leadership on the commission. But I do think it's strange that we have one commission. I'm pretty sure that the HRA and the port, I don't know if it's in statute, but they definitely have it in their own bylaws, the makeup, right? We don't have, what I'm hearing from Councilmember DeLisandro is we don't have something like that for our other boards and commissions. We don't have consistency in terms of like how we, who we appoint. And when we look at our website, it says it's, the boards and commissions are an opportunity for community involvement and representation. And we are community members, but we also are in elected official positions. And so, so I guess I just, I'm, I hear that you are feeling pushed out or and you're taking it personally. But I don't, A, I don't see that, I see this as, as having consistency. Because again, as a public health person, why don't we have somebody on the Advisory Board of Health? Why don't we have somebody on Parks and Rec? Why don't we have, it's just, this is a kind of a standalone example in my mind. But the other part of this is, I actually personally, I mean, we know that there are others, Councilmember DeLisandro, Councilmember Rivas last year expressed interest in sustainability. And I don't think it is fair to assume, coming into these meetings tonight, that somebody is going to continue in seats. I think we should have robust discussion around who should be appointed. And if others are interested, they should be able to be allowed to participate too and voice their interest.
See if others would like to be in first? Okay, Councilmember Lohman?
All right. Well, you know, the proposal I had was to add another seat, you know, like we had with HRA. If there is, you know, this is an issue that's as, as important to, to the, to the, to the entire community as, as this housing is. And so I made those requests last year. And I mean, I didn't want to bring this up, you know, but staff never made, took a step to that, you know, what am I supposed to do? So I, I mean, I don't want to throw the, throw the staff under the, you know, but I did bring it up. I made a good faith effort. Because I do know there's interest in this, in terms of trying to, trying to move this forward. You know, often these, I, you know, but, I mean, you can't stop how, how you feel about something because you're passionate about it. And when we, when we start, when we set this up, that's what that council decided. This is a different council. And if this council wants to go in a different direction, you know, I can't, I can't stop this council from doing that. And I also can't stop how I feel about it. I mean, I'm passionate about this. It's one of the reasons why I ran for, for office. I worked hard to, to get it set up, you know, getting folks organized and, and put together, you know, just, just really nurturing. And I do hope to, I wanted to turn it over at some point. And I do think that we need to have other council members on other commissions. I've never been opposed to that. This has just been my personal passion. And so what I would say to this body is, is rather than, you know, preventing me from, from doing this, let's open it up like we have with HRA. Let's appoint other people on, on to other, other commissions as well. You know, if there's interest there to, to go ahead and do that. Just when we set this particular commission up, which was, was community led, I was a part of the grassroots organization that did this. And so we all thought it'd be a good idea. It was important to have that connection between council and this particular group. Because what we were concerned about was that this issue might not resonate or we would have trouble being able to get these things across and being able to, to get these things done. And I still continue to have that concern. If we take a representative off, it didn't have to be me. But if we take a representative off there, I'm concerned about that. So that's what I would say. And again, I can't, I can't stop this body from doing whatever it wants to do. I'm only one member. But I, my recommendation is to, to look at other options that are out there. I wish we would have had this conversation prior to tonight rather than waiting till the night to, in a sense, I feel surprised about this. So, and I know, Mayor, I talked to you about this as well, about the ideas that I had. And certainly open to those ideas. But again, I can't execute these things myself. I need staff to support me in order to do that. And I need other folks on this council to support me in order to do that as well.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Looking at it as an issue for all commissions, I actually don't think we should have council members on commissions. I think they should be independent bodies that, that work on their own and present to us and talk to us. I do think, you know, this was a unique situation in terms of getting something off of the ground. And I think Dwayne's done an amazing job of working with that group and helping them. But the reality is I think we're in a much better position right now. I mean, we have sustainability embedded into our plans, into our strategic plan. But I do have a technical question about that is because our city code says there is a seat for this. I mean, so does this take a change to city code? And what does that process look like? I mean, is that process something we can just do? Is that something that we need to go through legal to work on?
Ms. Manchard?
Mayor members, it would be a code ordinance. It would require a public hearing after a public notice. Mapping it out, I think we could, if you wanted to make a change, give me, you could give me direction tonight on what you'd like me to prepare. I could put a public hearing notice in the paper for next Thursday and it could be on the 27th of January meeting.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So to, to exactly Councilmember Nelson's point, I, I am of the opinion that there should not be council members on these commissions. And that's the reason for this. This is not a personal question. I apologize if anybody feels uncomfortable about that. That's not what this is. I also think in 2017, when the Sustainability Commission was there, we didn't have a full time staff member like Emma Strauss, who is incredible and capable of, of leading this charge. She not only has that, but we have two additional staff members. So we've, we've got an entire embedded staff organization here to help that commission now, which we didn't have before. And so I'm of the opinion that we leave it, leave it be an independent body. And I'm of that opinion for all of our commissions. Again, the HRA and the port are separate authorities. They are not council member. We, that's, the council is on there because they spend city money. But they are separate authorities with their own charter and everything else. They should not be related to our volunteer commissions at all. I'm not speaking about them in any way, shape or form when I think about this. I am speaking specifically about Parks, Arts and Recreation, Advisory Board of Health, Sustainability, Human Rights and Creative Placemaking. And Creative Placemaking, by the way, I'd looked at the ordinance earlier, they have a different section altogether than what Sustainability has. And so that, there's inconsistency all around is my point. And that's why I think putting a moratorium on this, getting the code right, bringing back an ordinance that would apply to all commissions equally. And it could say, there's a council member. It could say there's two council members. There could say, by invitation of the commission, there's a council member. You know, it could say anything that we wanted to at that point. But then it would apply to all the commissions. And that seems to me to be the right way to do it if we are going to fix this, if you will. So that's, that's what I would propose.
Councilmember Mua?
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question is, how long would it take us to do it right? To look through, do the charter change process, make sure that we've brought in all the, the chairs of the commissions, talk through the process? Like, how long is that going to take realistically?
Ms. Manchard?
Mayor members, we, there is a staff member whose job it is to coordinate the staff liaisons of the commissions. So we could certainly have that conversation within a couple of days. The actual meeting of all of the heads of the commissions or something like that to get their feedback would probably take a lot more time. We could have it sequentially, you know, by email or what have you. The other thing I'll, I'll note, just because The other thing I'll note, just because it has been some time, but we did do a very full rewrite of this section of the code back, I want to say it was in 2018, 2017. We went through every section. It was, I recall it distinctly, because it was Chris Wilson and me that did a lot of the work on it, and did a lot of updates based on feedback that we were receiving at the time. So it has been looked at within the last, I guess, five, eight years, seven years. And it's obviously up to you, if you'd like me to look at some other sections, happy to do that. It's not a charter change, though it's a city code change. So it doesn't require us to go through the charter amendment process. It's a pretty quick process. We could do it in, in January.
So, Mayor, I'm thinking, because what I want to do is make sure we do this right, because I do agree with the points are being made, but I don't want to like rush into it to say, okay, we're gonna have, we're gonna keep council members on commissions, and then in a month, we're trying to put people on. Like, I'm sorry, I have a family, I need a plan today so that we can plan the whole year. So my initial thought on this is, because we're having the conversation today in '25, does it make sense for us to appoint Councilmember Lohman if he continues to want to serve on this for the next year? We go through a robust process that includes all the heads, that includes staff, that includes feedback from us at public hearings, from the, from residents within Bloomington, so that we're not trying to rush and do something on the fly. That's my thought process if we're going through this, because I do believe we need change. We need to have our commissions be able to, to come to us and do the work that we've tasked them to do without us interfering with it. But I also don't want to, to limit one commission because we're trying to work this on the fly, because we've seen how successful that is when we try to do that sometimes. And so, that's my initial thought on this, is we're having this conversation, is moving forward an appointment for '25, and having this go through this year so that we can have this in effect in '26 to ensure that everything is standard and people know and we're ready to go, so that we don't have this conversation again in '26.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I just wanted to chime in to say that I also don't believe that we should have council members on commissions. And to your point, Councilmember Muah, would your thought process of having like a full engagement of like chairs and commission members, like, if we have, I mean, we haven't heard from everybody, but if we have general consensus on the council that, well, we don't really actually think that there should be council members on commissions, then what would be the point of going, like going through that robust of a process? Do you know what I mean? I, I agree with, I agree with what you're saying in terms of like, we don't have to, like, make it in the next, we don't have to have a public hearing in two weeks or whatever. But, but I guess, I guess that would be my question. Like, I mean, I personally don't know what a robust engagement process would do if there is consensus that we shouldn't have, that they really should be community member-driven and so.
Mayor.
Councilmember Muah.
I, I think my, my thought on that is that I would venture to say there are some commissions who would like to have council members on that. So although we would agree here on council, maybe we probably shouldn't have council members on there, there is a difference in, just being on the HRA. There is a difference in the energy, and the questions, and the things that come up because there is someone on council on there. And so, if we're gonna task these commissions to do the work that we want them to do, I think it's on our best, in our best interest to get their input, to say, do you guys agree and align with what we've, we are thinking up here? Or is our thought completely different? And that you want more council members on there, that you want to have a better train of thought? You want something to really drive the conversations and move the work that we're doing further than just the one time a year that you guys, we come to you at the city council. And that's been something I've thought about since being on council, is that our relationships with our commissions is, once a year, when they're coming up here, present their plans to us. And so, what was that? Totally, they do, yes. But for the most part, in public, they're not here until they're presenting their annual plans to us, and then we're saying yes or no, or if there's anything that we want to add or change, like, they're not getting that feedback, and then we don't ever hear back from them again. And so, I think if we're gonna have a strong relationship with our commissions, it behooves us to include them in the conversation, make sure that as we're setting up these commissions and the structure that we want them to be, and aligns with what the community and those commissioners expect us to support, in the, how we support them and how they do their work. And so that we can strengthen that relationship that we have with the commissions to not just say, we, we just want to hear from you once a year. So that's, that's kind of where I've been at it, and we're not, I'm thinking about how we better support and structure our commissions.
Thank you, Councilmember Muah. Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I think Councilmember Muah articulated that pretty well to Councilmember Carter's question. I, I would say that the answer is that, in the spirit of our philosophy of engagement and not making decisions without consulting with the folks who are impacted by the decisions we make, that it's appropriate to have a conversation about what level of engagement, or if this is something that rises to that level. I think Councilmember Muah articulated why he thought it did, right? And so, I think that's the right question to have. I would say two options available to the council here. One is make an appointment, and then if there is going to be a change, deal with it at that point. Second is not make an appointment tonight. And the way that the commissions are generally structured is that if a successor is not appointed to a seat, then a person will continue to serve in that capacity until such time that a successor is appointed. So you could either take action or not take action, but I think it would be good to give direction to staff on what your expectation is for how you'd like to resolve the situation.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. So those are the two options, council, and I'm, I, I agree we need a comprehensive look at this, just because I don't think we have done it. And it, it should be done to ensure continuity, to ensure consistency, and to ensure that we're doing the best that we can, and so on. I also, if I'm recalling the conversation, Councilmember Lohman, correct me if I'm wrong, but this whole notion of a council appointee to the Sustainability Commission came about, I think there was, and I think that you and I were the only two there, Mr. Verbrugge as well, but I think it was a matter of, there was some staff trepidation about the Sustainability Commission. And so, the council wanted to put a council member on there to ensure that there was a little bit of heft to the Sustainability Commission, to have a council member there. I don't think we have that issue any longer. I mean, I would not say that there is any dismissal or, or, you know, aside, I look at our Sustainability Commission and the work that they're doing, and they're very important and good work that they're doing. So the rationale behind doing this differently in the first place, I don't think is there any longer. But at the same time, I, I also agree, I don't know that I, I want to change kind of on the fly here. I would rather make sure that we do this correctly. And so, I mean, I would support, I would support asking staff to take a look at this to bring back options for us, to have a full discussion on this. But I think at this time, I would also support appointing Councilmember Lohman tonight, with the understanding that by mid-April, you might not be on the Sustainability Commission anymore. And I think if you're okay with that, and.
I'm okay with that. I would really like to just get on there so I can at least get another vice chair, so I can get out there, so I don't put the, put the group in a.
But then, what I would like to see is have the staff bring back options for us, a couple of ideas, how we restructure, what we might do, get some feedback, as Mr. Verbrugge said, get that input from, from others, and to make sure that, you know, within 90 days, and this won't, shouldn't take long, we could do this in 60 days if we really wanted to, I think. And then we, we have options in front of us. And then also, with a full council, I mean, Councilmember Rebus not being here, I think, I mean, it should, it should play a part in this as well. I think we, there should be seven of us here making this decision and making this vote. So that would be my recommendation. I mean, I take it for what it's worth, but I think if we made the appointment tonight, addressed and instructed staff to bring back options within, you know, 60 days or whatever, and take a look at this from a, an engagement and a feedback perspective, and then make an ultimate decision, not right here, right now, on when it's brought up this evening, but within, you know, by, by the end of March. I mean, does that make sense? I don't know if everybody agrees with it. I think it might be disappointing to a few folks, but I think it would, I, it feels the fairest way to move forward with this. But again, understanding that, I mean, by the second quarter here, it could change.
Well, that's, that's what this body does, and I have, you know, I've supported what this body has done in the past, so I don't, I don't have any problem with that. So, I mean, I serve at the will of the people and, you know, also of this, of this, of this, of this council. So, and it sounds like I, I'm hearing my colleagues, they want to make a change.
So if, if I could, council, I'm gonna move that we appoint Councilmember Dwayne Lohman to the Sustainability Commission, and direct staff to do a comprehensive look at our council appointments to commissions. Help me here with the language.
Why don't you do the appointment, Mayor, first, and then do a secondary action?
Okay, sounds good. I would, I would move an appointment of Councilmember Lohman to the Sustainability Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Councilmember Lohman to be on the Sustainability Commission. And for the record, I didn't say, I didn't complete that for 2025, understanding that that might not be the case. So appoint Councilmember Lohman to the Sustainability Commission. No further council discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. And now, from a, for a staff direction, I would have staff within, what's a decent timeframe? 60, 90 days?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I think it's okay to direct staff to say, well, within 30 days to come back with recommendations for a process.
Okay. Within 30 days to come back with recommendations for a process for our council involvement on volunteer commissions. All right?
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Specifically, commissions, this is not about our authorities. They're completely separate entities with their own statutory requirements. We can't, I'm not trying, I'm not asking staff to do anything with those. I don't think we can. I think they're separate entities.
I, I, I would agree, and I think it would be, if the staff wanted to do the work, it would be simply, we can't do anything.
Fair enough. But I want to be very clear, and we can articulate the specific committees, but, I mean, we, it, we know which ones they are, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Everybody, staff, is that clear?
Yep, it is. And to answer the question, the, the boards and commissions are the ones in city code that we're talking about, correct? The other authorities have their own bylaws that they have to approve.
All right. Everybody's good with that? All right, we will move on. Item 5.6 is our appointment to the state.
Consensus? Did you want to vote? Did you want a consensus?
For the staff appoint, or for the staff direction?
Direction, yeah.
Do we want to take a vote on the staff direction? I'll make that motion to make that staff direction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, for the staff direction. All in favor, please signify by, oh.
Clarify? Sorry. So this is to recommend different processes that can be taken, or different options for what it could look like.
My understanding of the motion is that staff is directed within 30 days to come back with a recommendation for a process.
For like an engage.
Regarding boards and commissions and council seats.
Okay. And how long do we think this whole, like, how would the staff come back with like, okay, here's what a 30-day engagement process would look like, and this is what, like, a more robust 90? I, I personally am just really concerned about capacity across the board.
Yeah.
Major transition going on right now in the leadership of the city. I don't know about you all, but my schedule is packed, not just with my own, like, family and work stuff, but also with council-related stuff. And so, I just, I really hesitate adding on this whole new robust process. So, so that's why I was clarifying, like, is it the process? Or is it options for us?
That's a good question. Sure. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, it's a good question. I think the discussion for the council when comes back with the recommendation is, how robust do you want it to be? Because I think the process of just consulting with the commissions, which most of them would meet during the month of February, you can ask them as part of their agenda, you know, to have a focused conversation around it, get feedback probably by March, and then have that information to have a conversation that, if it's something that you feel is worthy of a little bit more engagement to the community, that's the direction you should give back to staff.
Does that make sense, Councilmember? Okay.
So I can make sure that I understand what we're doing?
What do you have written there as, as far as the motion is?
Mayor, I have something along the lines of return within 30 days with a recommendation. That's what I wrote down, but.
For a process? For a.
To determine council involvement.
To determine council involvement in boards or in commissions, in commissions.
And I'm also hearing.
Advisory, yes.
And we're, just to be clear, we're talking about the ones, 2.70 in the code, 1 through 7, is the ones that I'm understanding that you're talking about.
Yes.
And I'm also hearing, like, you want like sort of a low, medium, high options for process? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor, could I ask, does that include the Charter Commission too, or no?
No.
No.
Sorry, I didn't mean to speak over you. They're separate as well.
They're separate as well, yes. Councilmember Nelson.
Super quick, don't mean to be overly technical, but 30 days is before our first meeting in February. Our first meeting in February isn't until the 10th.
I'm guessing they can do this by the 27th, and that's what we heard earlier. They can pull something together by the 27th. I think we have a motion and a second on the table. Everybody understand what we're talking about for staff direction here? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, so, thank you for the suggestions, thanks for the comments and the conversation here. I think we're on a path forward, so thank you for that. Now we will move on to, which one do we get to here? Item 5.6, our State Community Health Services Advisory Committee Appointment. Now I lost my place. Currently, Councilmember Carter and Dr. Nick Kelly. Councilmember Carter is appointed, Dr. Nick Kelly is our alternate. This is an annual appointment. Councilmember Carter, you're looking to be reappointed, I'm hoping?
I am happy to continue serving.
We would very much appreciate that, given your knowledge and expertise in all of this, so thank you so very much. So, council, I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmember Carter as the city's representative and public health administrator. Dr. Nick Kelly is the alternate to the State Community Health Services Advisory Committee to fill terms expiring on December 31st, 2025.
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Nelson, to fill the opening on the State Community Health Service Advisory Committee. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Up next is our I-35W Solutions Alliance Appointments. Currently, we have Councilmember Lohman appointed with Councilmember Nelson as the alternate. The staff in past years was Mr. Keel. We're looking at Julie Long as the staff appointment as of the first of this year. Councilmember Lohman, Councilmember Nelson, interested in re-upping? Very good. So, council, I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmember Lohman as the representative and Councilmember Nelson as the alternate, and Julie Long as the staff representative to the I-35W Solutions Alliance for terms set to expire on December 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Delisandro to make the appointments to the I-35W Solutions Alliance. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Item 5.8 is our appointment to the U.S. 169 Corridor Coalition. Councilmember Delisandro is our current representative with Councilmember Nelson as a alternate. Councilmember, or, excuse me, staff members Kirk Roberts and Julie Long would be the staff appointees to this. Councilmember Delisandro, Councilmember Nelson, continue to serve? So, council, I'd look for a motion to appoint Councilmember Delisandro as the council representative and Councilmember Nelson as the council alternate, as well as Kirk Roberts as the staff representative, and Julie Long as the staff alternate to the U.S. Highway 169 Corridor Coalition, to terms expiring December 31st, 2025.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Nelson, to make the appointment to the U.S. 169 Corridor Coalition. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed, motion carries six zero. Next up is the Bloomington Convention and Visitors Bureau, that's the old name. This is the Bloomington, Minnesota Travel and Tourism Appointments. And currently, I serve on it as well as Councilmember Nelson. Mr. Verbrugge has served on it since his appointment. Because he will be stepping aside, the recommendation is Kim Bergren to fill that vacancy, likely until a full-time city manager is appointed. But just to make sure we have the appointment for the year, I would recommend appointing her to the full-year term. Councilmember Nelson still interested in, and I am as well? I'm assuming Ms. Bergren is as well. So council, I would look for a motion to appoint myself, Mayor Bussey, and Councilmember Nelson and Community Development Director Bergren to the Bloomington, Minnesota Travel and Tourism Board of Directors with one-year terms expiring December thirty-first, 2025. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, a second by Councilmember Mu to make the appointments to the Bloomington, Minnesota Travel and Tourism Board. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Item five point ten is our council secretary appointment. This one is pins-and-needles kind of stuff. Council, I would look for a motion to appoint Safa Mercer as council secretary, as secretary of the council for a term of January first, 2025 to December thirty-first, 2025, and Denise Christensen, executive assistant to the city manager, as the acting secretary when the secretary is absent.
Can I make one comment, Mayor? Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Mercer and to Ms. Christensen for all the work that they do. I know this job isn't easy, so we appreciate all the work you do to make our lives easier so we can continue the work here. And so with that, then, I would move to appoint Safa Mercer, council secretary, as secretary to the city council for a term of January first, 2025 to December thirty-first, 2025, and Denise Christensen, executive assistant to the city manager, as the acting secretary when the secretary is absent.
Motion by Councilmember Mu, a second by Councilmember Delisandro to make our council secretary appointment. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Congratulations, Safa. Item five point eleven is the Metro City's Board of Directors Appointment. Being, Bloomington actually officially has a permanent spot on the Metro City Board of Directors, and Mr. Verbrugge was our representative to that board. He's stepping aside, and staff has recommended that the mayor be appointed to the Metro City's Board of Directors. And so I would look for a motion to appoint myself, Mayor Bussey, to the Metro City's Board of Directors. Councilmember Nelson?
I was just going to ask you a question.
Let's get it on the table first and then have the discussion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, a second by Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Nelson, question?
Just because I second it doesn't necessarily mean I'm going to vote for it.
Fair enough.
I just, my question is just cursory, probably. Is there any reason or downside to changing from a staff person to an elected on this board? I don't, you know, I know the entirety of the makeup and how it interacts and things. I know that, Mayor, you'll do a fantastic job representing it in the community. It's not that. I just, is there any downside to having someone that isn't staff?
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Nelson, the composition of the Metro City's Board is a combination of elected and appointed officials. My recommendation of the mayor is that historically Bloomington's seat has either been the mayor or the city manager that occupies it.
That explains why you didn't choose me, then.
Councilmember Delisandro?
I just had a different question. Is there a time, is there, there's no time limit on this, so does this, this is an appointment until it's brought up again for a reappointment, like, you don't want to anymore? As opposed to, like, we don't have to do this one annually, is that right?
I believe this is an annual appointment, councilmember. Am I correct, Mr. Verbrugge?
I would have to research, Mr. Mayor, whether we have had this on annually or not. I don't think that it has been, because the seat is permanent. And so I think it's up to the council to decide if they want to have somebody else serving in that seat.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, you would have to let us know if you wanted it to change. Okay, thanks, that's all I wanted to know, thank you.
So we have a motion and a second to appoint me to the Metro City's Board of Directors. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. And our final appointment is to the Greater Metropolitan Area Foreign Trade Zone. Now, in the past, this past year, myself and Mr. Verbrugge served. The recommendation is to appoint Holly Masek, our Port Authority Administrator. I would be willing, if folks were interested in diving into the foreign trade zone, if anybody wanted to take that on, I'd be willing to entertain that conversation, because frankly, it's just from a timing perspective and all the things that I've got going on, it's just, it's a bit much. It's an important position, very interesting stuff, kind of dense, but interesting stuff. So if there's any interest in, by another council member? Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, I have some interest in that. I'm just curious about what the requirements are. I mean, when do they meet and that kind of thing, so.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Loman. So the Greater Metro Area Foreign Trade Zone, that's a mouthful, is a joint powers organization between the City of Bloomington and the Metropolitan Airports Commission. Previously included Henpen County as part of the joint powers. They are no longer part of the joint powers just because of their interpretation of state statute as they think can't be a party to the joint powers. They're still there in an advisory and participatory manner, but it is just the two agencies currently. So they jointly, we, the organization administers a foreign trade zone, which is a U.S. Department of Commerce designation that allows companies to access trade zone powers and avoid duties, essentially, on goods that are moving through the zone. So it's a nice economic development tool for companies that are involved in importing goods. So as the mayor said, there isn't a lot of work here. We actually have a service contract with the Department of Employment and Economic Development at the state to serve as the administrator. So a deed staff person does the day-to-day work. The board meets typically every other month. And that's about an hour, hour and a half meeting.
Is it in the morning or at night?
It's a morning, it is a morning meeting. Typically about eight-thirty or nine o'clock in the morning.
At the MAC headquarters.
Oh, basically where I go for their knock? Okay. Yeah, I could handle that, depending on, yeah. You know, if there's somebody else.
Councilmember Nelson, were you interested as well, or? Okay. All right. So council, with that in mind, I would look for a motion to appoint Councilmember Loman and Holly Masek, our Port Authority Administrator, to the Greater Metropolitan Area Foreign Trade Zone.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Mu, a second by Councilmember Nelson to make the appointment to the Greater Metropolitan Area Foreign Trade Zone. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero.
And again, Mr. Mayor, that one doesn't come back to us year after year? It's a permanent appointment?
I honestly don't know, councilmember.
Yeah, that one we have not appointed annually either. That's typically been as a staff person as transitioned, so.
Gotcha.
Council, our last item of the evening is item five point thirteen, our City Council Policy and Issues Updates. We didn't have a listening session this evening because we had a reception for our Omar Bandarud Award winners, and so I don't have a listening session to report on. I will say, you know, in years past, council, we've kind of done what we call the hopes and dreams speech at this point, where everybody gets to chime in as to what they hope to accomplish this year and everything. I think Councilmember Carter brought it up very clearly. I mean, we've got so many things going on, and we have such limited capacity with our staff, with our council, with all of the time that we have. I think my recommendation, again this year, and it's very similar to last year, is that we direct staff and we, as council, continue to keep our nose to the grindstone and get done the work that we said we were going to get done. Whether it's the Bloomington Forward projects, whether it's the park renovations, whether it's just the service improvements that we've been talking about, all the different work that we do so well as a city and that we need to continue to do. The nuts and bolts work of a city that, of ninety-one thousand, that frankly has outstanding service providing, provides outstanding service to their residents. So I'm looking forward to 2025 as another year of doing that and looking forward to seeing some of the advancements we make, especially with the Bloomington Forward projects, and as well as, you know, that small task of, you know, hiring a new city administrator, city manager. Anything else, council, to add? Councilmember Loman?
Yeah, just one little thing that I've always done for either staff or council that have been departing, and I wanted to just be sure that I did say something about the city manager in brief. I know that when we first got started, manager, I was very skeptical of what you said that you were going to accomplish and do, and I wasn't a big supporter of, because I just didn't think, I didn't believe that you'd be able to accomplish the stuff that you said that you were going to do. And I have to say that I'm pretty amazed at what you've been able to do over these last ten years. And I know what you would say, because you're a very humble guy, no, no, it's all, you know, council and that kind of thing. But I just, I look back over the years of when you first walked in to this council, and you're, I just think it's just so fitting that it's on today. And I'm glad that, Mayor, you moved the Martin Luther King dedication and proclamation up to today. Because I just think that this city manager really understands the import of that particular civil rights movement and the importance of that for the future of Bloomington. And I think that is, from this council member's perspective, really the hallmark in the legacy that you're going to leave here in this institution is that, that important emphasis on that particular topic and your achievements around that. That's why I'm really sorry to see you go to another institution, because I think that you were focused on that. I think about our walks when we were in DC and how you give a great tour, and I'm hoping to pass that same tour on to my kids and talk about how I had the chance to walk around with this great guy, Jamie Verbrugge. And I think of, you know, the words that Martin Luther King once said, that the ultimate measure of a person is not where they stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but where they stand at times of challenge and controversy. And one of the things that I have appreciated about you as an individual is that you've been willing to really humbly, even when there were situations that were difficult, you still looked at them. You asked for advice and you worked through those. And I think that when the community looks at that and they look back on this era of Bloomington governance, they'll see that we made that step forward to trying to create a better place for all people to be able to dwell. And I think that that's important, and I don't want this day to pass by without being able to say that. But that does take leadership. You've had that leadership, I've appreciated that leadership. And I'm glad you've been here for the last ten years, and I'll miss that emphasis that you really place on that. And again, just thank you for your hard work, your care for the community. And a lot of people didn't necessarily care for that, but that's okay. You still looked right in it, so I appreciate that, thank you, Jamie.
Council others? Councilmember Delisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'll add my thanks as the lowest-ranking member of the council that's here tonight. You onboard new council members really well, and I think it has a lot to do with your willingness to take every person at face value and to think about them with the best of intention from the get-go. It's a part of your DNA that I hope to model. I'm glad we got to work together, and I thank you very much for that. I have four things that I will bring up to the interim city managers, because I think they're just carryovers of things that we talked about, but I might as well put them out there in the public sphere. The first one is related to, related to the ongoing landscaping challenges at Fire Station Number Four. So we'll talk about that. I think there's, you might even know about that, but there's some challenges there. These are all in my district. The second one is the challenges that some folks have with the work that isn't being done yet at Stanley Avenue. We did the, we did pass the streets or the sidewalk stuff, but they want, some people on that block want the street closed. And I know Mr. Roberts has said that's not an option, but they're not happy with that. And so they're looking for ways to come to council, and also we'll be working through that. I wrote down the other Thor, and then I closed my book, so, really quickly. Oh, I, tonight, we talked about this quarterly cleaning area from the guys in the stormwater folks. I'd love a map of what that looks like. Not, I don't want anybody to do anything, I'm not asking for more work or anything, but what, I would love to see what that is, because I think that there's, that's information that, that's data that's really valuable in us making certain decisions about things, and I'd love to know what that looks like. And then the last one is?
Councilmember?
Yes.
As somebody who did sewer jetting?
Yeah.
In college, go out with him and do sewer jetting.
Well, I saw the guys on my street, on Eighty-Sixth Street today, as I was going to the gym, and I said hello to them, and they were like, who the heck are you? So I was afraid to go up to them, but I will, I will be very interested. Fatburgs unite, right? And then the last thing is, there are some open questions about the animal shelter. So we want to, or the animal control center, so we want to get to those. So these are just, I'm putting them out there largely because I think they're carryover items, conversations that I've had with Mr. Verbrugge over the last six months, quarter, or whatever, that need to be continued to move forward. And I just want the public to know that even with the transition, and I'm sure every council member here has a list like this, we're keeping track of those things and we'll make sure they get done. Thanks. And thank you again, Mr. Verbrugge.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Also, anything else? Councilmember Mu?
Thank you, Mayor. First, just thank you to Mr. Verbrugge. I think when I first met you, I was just on the Bloomington Leash program. I had no idea who you were, what the city did, or anything like that. But as I've gone through my process and continue to try to help our city, I think you have been one of the core fundamental foundations that we have here in Bloomington that helps us move the work that we try to do up here forward. And it does not pass me by how difficult your job is, and I do not envy your job at all. But I know how important it is, and it takes special people to do your type of work. So thank you for your dedication, thank you for continuing to make sure that Bloomington is a place where people want to be. And I know that Catholic Charities is very lucky to have you. Secondly, the Bloomington Jefferson Mites Hockey Outdoor Classic is this Saturday at Westwood. So if anyone in the community wants to come out, watch some fun hockey, there's going to be food trucks and just community events going on, come on out and check that out. I am a year-two hockey dad, so I will be there. Feel free to say hi. You can watch the kiddos slip inside on the ice, and it's going to be really fun. Thanks.
Others? Mr. Verbrugge, I gave you the last word tonight.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, I appreciate that. I said most of what I wanted to say earlier today. I apologize if I wasn't as eloquent as I hoped to. Here's, here's the last thing that I would say. I think that this council should continue to strive for big things and want to do, want to do things that are going to make the community better, right? You can find anybody to just manage a city. You can find anybody to be elected to the city council who just wants to show up and vote on stuff, but it's something to find people to lead. So I would say, keep leading. Find somebody who is going to join you as a partner in leading the community and continue to focus on what you think is the right thing to do to make this the best community that people want to live in. Because frankly, that's what this council has done for the last ten years. That's what's made it really exciting to be here. It's fun work, it's important work, it's gratifying work, and it makes a difference in people's lives. So keep doing that thing. Thanks for letting me do it.
And thank you. Council, I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Thank you much to staff for being with us this evening. Thank you, council, for your good work. Thanks to everybody who is here for our, it was an enjoyable, good meeting. I love the Omar Bandarud, always do, and I appreciate the feedback from so many people. So thanks much. Everybody have a good rest of your week.